Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, September 11, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM and ask my colleagues to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just before we proceed with the agenda this evening, I did want to take a moment just to acknowledge that today is the 22nd anniversary of the attacks on September 11, something that I know has affected all of us in many ways and obviously it's a day where we remember a number of people who were lost. And so would just ask my colleagues and the folks in the room today just to observe a moment of silence in memory of the victims of September 11. Thank you everyone. Moving on with the agenda, item number three, attendance. We're joined by all of our council members in person as well as Town Administrator Mayo, Town Council Mullen, and our Clerk Sherry Dalton. We'll proceed to item number four, public engagement. Sherry, do we have some folks lined up today?
Yes, we do Chair. We have Linda Butterworth and I think she's on right now too.
Hi, good evening.
Hi Linda.
Hi Linda.
It's not accessing my video for some reason.
No problem. Well, while you get started, would just ask if you could introduce yourself with your name and address and we do ask folks participating in public engagement to limit their remarks to three minutes, please.
Sure. I am Linda Butterworth, six Parker Circle, Wakefield and I thank you for this time and I'll just read a brief statement on behalf of myself and Molly Vedral. Good evening councilors. I'm Linda Butterworth, as I said, I'm parent volunteer for Walton Safe Routes to School Committee. A few weeks ago Molly Vedral and myself, Molly Vedral is our other parent volunteer, mailed all of you a letter of concern as well as the results for walking audit that included Solutions from Safe Routes to School Massachusetts Engineer. Some of you responded to our letter and also brought Lieutenant Anderson into the conversation. We appreciate those of you that are showing your support for safer crosswalks, signage, and sidewalks around the west side. We wanted to stress that we, as volunteers on this committee, have laid the groundwork, checked off the boxes, for lack of a better term, and have done what is needed for infrastructure grants through Safe Routes to School to be awarded to Wakefield. We have set the town up to be successful if they apply for these grants. The grants range from $10,000 to a little over $1 million with a fast approaching deadline at the end of September for a Signs and Lines grant. This would be free money for Wakefield to improve our infrastructure and that money isn't coming from taxpayers if we can get these grants. At this stage, we need Bill Renaud to apply for these grants and for our Town Council to support him in doing so. Mr. Renaud has been sent the links for these grant applications as well as our audits of traffic calming solutions from Safe Routes to Schools. We ask you to please support our solution focused committee and encourage Wakefield Town Government to apply for these grants and take advantage of non-taxpayer money that would make walking to Walton Elementary safer for the children as well as for the entire west side pedestrian and cyclist community. We are happy to set you up with our Safe Routes to School facilitator Judy Crocker if you have any questions about the process. She has also emailed Mr. Renaud and has offered to help him with any questions he has on filing out the grants for Wakefield as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much Linda. And just for the public to know, that Safe Roots to School audit has been circulated among all of the relevant town employees. I know Mr. Renaud is here and has seen it as well as Lieutenant Anderson. You know, certainly a number of components of that are in flight, but there is still more work to do there. So appreciate Linda, you and Molly and others continuing to advocate for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
No problem. Sherry, who's next?
Hey Chair, I do have Eleanor Axelrod. I do not see her online though, is she in studio?
She is in studio.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. Mr. Rubicki, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone again introducing yourself with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Paul Rubicki, 152 Parker Road. I'm here for three reasons tonight. The first reason that I'm here is to ask for a public forum on the massive blasting that's going to start up at the Vogue soon. So I have reviewed the blasting plan. Obviously it looks regulatorily compliant, but it really doesn't talk about anything about the kids, not the school or schools, period. Also here to express my deep concerns about the potential waste of millions of tax dollars destroying the forest up at the hill when the wetland permit has not been issued. I was part of the site walk with the Mass DEP at the end of July, July 25. We're still waiting to hear what Mass DEP is going to do, which could be to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. If they deny this project, all of that millions of dollars will be wasted. It's just shocking. And the last thing is, I'm really proud of the Conservation Committee after listening to all the details and going for almost eight months, coming out unanimously, sending a message that has really not been backed by any of the rest of the town management, et cetera. But they came out, listened to everything, walked the site and said 7-0 that the wetlands can't be protected. We're in a situation now where it's a horror on the hill and the trains going the wrong way. So please, we need to get the train on the right track and there's a lot of people who outrage what's happening up there and it's not good for the students and it's not good for the taxpayers. Thanks a lot.
Thank you Paul.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Axelrod. I live at Sheffield Road. I support what Paul Rubicki says. I recently sent a letter to Captain Shinney requesting that the public be made aware of the blasting plans. I think in talking to some Vogue parents, they were actually unaware there would be blasting. There are numerous impacts. There are three schools nearby, kids are going to be in school, you have kids who suffer from anxiety disorder, people who work from home, there's a child daycare nearby. I think it's imperative that the town and people in the surrounding areas who will be impacted by both the blasting and the traffic of the construction vehicles moving 140,000 cubic yards of rock back and forth through Wakefield also need to understand how this impacts their communities. On a separate note, I would also encourage Wakefield Public Safety officials to hold a public hearing on the numerous safety concerns that have been raised about the site location. These create unnecessary risks and foreseeable risks that will create an additional strain on public safety resources. These issues are inherent in the site location and cannot be mitigated post-construction. I do not believe Wakefield Public Safety officials have been adequately informed. These things include the 1100-foot ramp with very steep access, the lack of sidewalks on steep roads, proximity to Castle Rock and other cliff features where we recently had somebody die. I think these are very concerning for parents of high school students. And then on a final note, I'm not from here. I grew up in Washington DC. I was in New York during September 11th and I live by a very simple motto now, which is if I see something, I say something. And if your kids were in the street playing in traffic, I would say something. It doesn't matter that it's not my responsibility. It's all of our responsibilities to look out for everyone's safety. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Axelrod. Mr. Mayo, can we just, can I just ask that these comments be shared with the Northeast MetroTech School Board as well? Great, thank you. Sherry, anyone else?
No Mr. Chair, that's it for tonight.
Anyone else in studio? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number five, presentations and updates. 5A is a presentation about a Lake Quanapowett Floating Wetland Island Pilot Program presentation, which is a huge mouthful. Thank you. Bill and Rebecca, thank you for joining us. I assume you have a presentation for this one?
We do. I'm actually in the B chair today, so Rebecca's taking the lead on this one.
Yeah, so hi everyone, I'm Rebecca Davis. I work for the Conservation Department, as you probably know. Despite the fact that I've been here for, or I've worked Wakefield for a total of 16 years, I don't think I've really met most of you, so it's nice to meet you all.
Likewise, thank you for coming.
So I, this is how this works. Okay, so I put together this slide program and then I realized that I really filled it and there's a lot of information in here. So I'm happy that I gave it to you guys in advance to look over, but I think what I'll do tonight is like kind of go through it really quickly. I'm anticipating questions and that might be just more efficient to get to the question portion of it as fast as we can and you guys can really hit the details of what information you're looking for. So in a nutshell, Bill and I have been talking about applying for a grant to install a floating wetland as a one-year pilot program in Lake Quanapowett. The MAPC grant program is for municipalities. It is a one-year program up to $50,000. So what I'll do real quick is, I think you guys are probably pretty familiar with Lake Quanapowett, so I'm going to skip this one and this one. One of the interesting things to note is that this grant is under MAPC and there are some MAPC planning documents that do highlight that the community is really interested in protecting Lake Quanapowett and enhancing not only its, as a natural resource, but also its recreational opportunities. And I think this could potentially work towards achieving some of those. So the Accelerating Climate Resiliency Program, as I mentioned, but the, MAPC put out a webinar that you could attend that they really went through and described what they were looking for as a part of this grant program. I did listen to that webinar. In addition, they provided an opportunity to, for an expression of interest. So I actually met with two MAPC representatives over Zoom. I discussed what we would be looking for and they went through the project and they gave me tips and ideas of how I could improve the application or what kinds of things they would be looking for under the application. Interestingly enough, not only were they looking for, they have nine program priorities, which I think I highlighted two in here. There are nine altogether, they're online or I could read them, I have them here. But in addition to that, they're really looking for things like climate equity and so they really stress that and although it's not listed, it may be listed in one of their program priorities, but I actually think this fits really well with that as well. Lake Quanapowett is accessible to anybody. It is open for anybody and so in the event that we go through this program, it is, it will be accessible to anybody, whether they're a Wakefield resident or not. They also are looking for programs that'll sort of result in long-term changes. So this is about climate resiliency. And so they are looking for stepping stone projects, something that you could build upon. They're also looking for projects that other people could duplicate. As a matter of fact, this is somewhat a duplication of what I've contained in here of the Charles River Floating Wetland. That is much bigger. They did it in collaboration with Northeastern because they did, a gentleman did a PhD dissertation on it. In addition, they worked with City of Chicago, there's a river there that they also did, they worked with them for this floating project. This obviously would be much smaller to start, but that, saying that, the, I believe the second year of the Charles River Floating Wetland, they received this grant. So it certainly fits well within the parameters of what they're looking for. They're also looking for it to be scalable, so could we build on it, could we use it for something else, et cetera. They do, like I mentioned, they had nine program priorities. We actually meet two of them. A floating wetland is a type of green infrastructure. As a matter of fact, it functions as well for stormwater treatment as well as a rain garden and a retention basin. So one of the things I really want to talk about though, as far as this potential pilot program is, although we certainly understand that it would improve water quality, this is a very small scale, I think more importantly is the opportunity to really engage the community with starting this type of conversation and demonstrating that Wakefield, we are trying to move forward and we're going to start on trying out some different projects. It's an opportunity for people to volunteer. They can volunteer as, actually the Assembly. I am jumping a little bit, but there'll be a lot of public input opportunities as well. And I think if this project goes through, what I really think is important as well is that there's an opportunity here to continue and having this conversation last longer than a year. Part of this grant, I would hope to have some webinars and some virtual events for the public to attend to learn about this. There's an opportunity for lots of people to attend in different subjects. As a quick aside, the Conservation Commission last year hosted a virtual event of which we had a consultant from, I think they're out of Cambridge, come through and give a description of phyto remediation. And so that was sort of like a, I call it a continuing education opportunity. So it was open to the public, by the way, and it was posted and put out that we didn't get a huge attendance. So what I'm hoping with something like this that is really visible, when we host more events like that, it, there's an opportunity, I'm hoping that more people are aware of it and they might start participating in the conversation. So that says a quick aside and I think I have that in here somewhere, sort of jumping around. I did mention the goals and, so yes, it definitely, floating wetlands are known to improve water quality, whether or not, or let me go backwards and say, I do not think that this particular floating wetland will improve Lake Quanapowett's water quality as a whole. It's not going to do the job. It's just one piece in starting to do the job. And Bill's here also, he's got a lot of projects to improve water quality in Lake Quanapowett. This is, I say he's more upstream and this one's in-stream. So as you know, there's not a lot of land to work with in order for Bill to do his job of, you know, implementing all these stormwater management things prior to these runoff and discharges getting to the lake. This is an opportunity to do it in a space that we have and is available. He's really limited in space of what he can do. Another bonus of this is the obvious improvement of habitat, both aquatic and terrestrial. One of the interesting things that they note about some of the other floating wetlands, there are others, is that they're finding a greater diversity of fish in and amongst the roots of the plants. And it sort of goes back to providing a safe haven for more zooplankton, which then feed, that goes into feeding the algae and then you have more fish feeding on the zooplankton. So part of the benefit that if, that could be realized in a project like this is improving sort of the diversity of the lake and improve the habitat of the lake, which may result in greater opportunities for things like fishing, for instance. I used to see fishermen around that BB Cove area. I don't see it as much when I drive by, maybe that's just because I don't see it as much, I'm not sure. But hoping that maybe we could have something like that sort of come back. There are certainly other benefits to floating wetlands. I'm not looking to achieve any of these, this was just for your knowledge, more of that. Talking about the public outreach and education, I really, really think that this is the biggest and most important component of this. There's a lot of opportunities here. We will host probably an initial virtual event so that we can tell everyone what's happening and gather up information and just have sort of like a meeting, greet and introduction to the project. And I will get to it later, there'll be lots of time and input from the public, or opportunities to have input from the public throughout the process. If we go through the design and permitting phase, there'll be a lot of public input because there'll be public hearings for that process. One of the other things we talked about, so this sign is consistent, we designed this with Jennifer McDonald, she designed this actually, and this will be consistent with all of the other signs that'll be around Lake Quanapowett. This also can be a destination on the wayfinding, so that can be labeled on that. One of the, my favorite thing about this in particular is the QR code. So what we're hoping to do is, so this, wherever it ends up being in the event that the floating wetland goes forward, we would have a sign there that's going to describe a little bit of project. More importantly, there's going to be a QR code and through that you will go to a web landing page and there we can provide a lot of information about the project, which you would be able to include on just a sign. Another piece and an equitable, a piece contributing to equity is that, and I was speaking with Jennifer McDonald, we can make those web landing pages in any language and the availability to be in multiple languages. So I thought that was really important. The sign itself probably won't be in any, it will be, you know, in English, however, we're looking into and trying to figure out a way what to write underneath versus like learn more about, we talked about having maybe the flags or just some type of indication that if you do not, if English isn't your first language, there's an opportunity still for you to go and learn something about the project. I gave you a couple of examples. This is my favorite. It certainly doesn't have to be, it can be whatever, anyone decides upon. Stacy Levy installed this spiral wetland in a lake in Alabama. I have actually been in contact with her. We've traded a lot of emails and traded a lot of, no, just emails. We're trying to talk on the phone, I haven't gotten there yet. And she is an environmental artist, she has a wonderful webpage, you can go and see all the things that she's done. But this was just one example of how this project has a great opportunity to double as like an art installation. So there are other designs that could be available. This happens to be the one that I know of the best. It is taken from another artist who did the Spiral Jetty. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the Spiral Jetty. So Stacy Levy mimicked her project after that. This actually was part of an art festival that they did in Alabama. I'm not, I don't remember the town. There's a lot of information about the Charles River Floating Wetland. This was a very big project, leading to things, I don't know if you guys have heard of the Emerald Tutu? Anyone heard of that yet? No, that's coming. You'll be hearing about that soon. That program was extremely successful. I have spoken to the program manager twice. What was really interesting is one of the things I asked her was, if you did it all over again, did you learn anything from this process? Would you do anything differently? And she said absolutely not. So wow, that's pretty amazing. So if we have any question, their project was a little bit different. I asked about materials, for instance, but theirs was a much sturdier construction than I think would be necessary for Lake Quanapowett as they have tidal action. We really wouldn't have to deal with that. Again, opportunities to be visually pleasing, plant selection, you have flowering, you have different shapes, sizes, colors, you can pick any of that. So the considerations for where this floating wetland, in the event that we are successful in receiving the grant, the next step would be, we would hire a consultant, who will work with Bill, and we will come up with a design and this will, and the right, the best location based on the environmental parameters and the sizing in the event that they want it to be an art installation, I was talking a little bit earlier about, if you want a design that's going to dictate how many pieces you need. So it was hard to come up with an estimate. If we want just a rectangular island, I can give you that right now, what that cost would be as far as the matrix was concerned. But, so that was really hard to give a formal estimate as far as what that would cost. It really is going to depend on what the final design is. So the location sizing, design, all of that stuff, I really anticipate will be a public process. Obviously the permitting, it's going to have to go through the Conservation Commission, Bill's going to do that.
He is.
And it may have to go through Chapter 91 license because it is a great pond. I have reached out to them a few times to see if this indeed is a temporary project where it is put in and then removed, what that would qualify for. I haven't heard back, but there is also that opportunity. So as previously, previously mentioned, I sort of am in favor right now in front of Learn From Friends of Lake Quanapowett, it's called BB Cove. And I think that sort of where it bows out a little bit on Main Street. And one of the reasons for that is it is really visible and that actually is the point of this. And there are a lot, I can see it when I drive by, so not only when you drive by, but also when you walk by, it's really a great location. You get to look down on it as well. So I think if there's something visually pleasing, I just think it's a real good opportunity to put something right in there. I will mention that I've also spoken to Quanapowett Yacht Club and they, I've talked about where their races would be and where their markers are and they, she doesn't believe at this point in time that this would be in any of their way, they should have, be able to turn around their marker and come back. But with that said, I'm planning on including them in all the conversations. They are aware of this, they'll be a part of the process if, in the event that we come up with a location, it's really important that they say this is a good location and it's not going to interfere with our activities. Permitting, as I mentioned, and I also anticipate that the consultant will assist with some of the permitting aspects. The materials are relatively simple. It's a, it's some type of substrate, you know, major, there's, there are two options that I've seen. One is more like this plastic floating mat that has holes in it that you can put in like a little pot and you put the plug plant in and you can remove the pot and plant and put a new one in if you needed to. The other one is a little bit hardier and it is a little bit thicker and it, it doesn't result in as many plant removal as you would, but it's really, really sturdy and that's more similar to the one that they use in Charles River. So you have that, the plants, there's a distributor, Wetland, New England Wetland Plants. We can get almost anything that we would need from them. Some type of attachment to some type of weight. And again, this is what will be decided through some engineer when we hire, for the consult, when we hire the consultant, they'll be able to do this and/or Bill, depending on his timing, but absolutely in coordination with Bill. Relatively simple. For installation, I'm anticipating that it would, we'd probably go over to Loa Common, put out the mat, put in the plants and pull it out. We have a couple of opportunities of how we actually pull it out. I've had a few conversations. That is still to be determined finally, but most people, I've talked to three different people and they've all said that likely they'd be able to tow it out. And then you drop the anchor and then that's really it. It's pretty simple. There will be routine checks to ensure that the mat doesn't float away and that the anchor is staying about where we hope it stays. It might move a little bit, but for the most part it should stay in one vicinity. I've spoken to these guys, all three Friends of Lake Quanapowett, actually were looking to be a partner on our grant application or they have agreed to be a partner on our grant application. Saugus River Watershed Council will also give us a letter of support for the grant application and I have spoken to the Quanapowett Yacht Club to ensure that they will be part of the process. They are in favor of it. I haven't specifically asked for a letter of support from them. I plan on doing that in the event we move forward with a grant and I am anticipating getting that. And again, there's just a lot of opportunities, I think, to use this as sort of a spring, like a platform to jump forward and to say, there's a lot of things that we could be doing, here's one of them, here's what we're going to start investigating and hopefully, you know, this will be an opportunity to engage the public a little bit more. So with that, Bill, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that this is something that I was already targeting, I think, in an out year, about three to five years is when I was looking to actually start this. So this does, definitely dovetails with things I'm already doing around the lake. I think the BB Cove location actually makes the most sense because we're very space constrained there for any type of treatment. So in my preliminary designs of kind of consolidating outfalls and installing treatment systems on land, you know, this is definitely the best location. And we'd look at testing and supporting with some of our stormwater funds that we do annually. So if this turns into a permanent installation or looks, we can look to potentially increase it depending on what we get for test results. But I'm looking to test and see what we get for benefits and, you know, I'm hopeful that this will be something that we could scale up and that the community would support.
Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. Just before I open it up to questions and discussion, a couple of logistical questions. When does the grant application due?
Friday.
Okay, so that's soon.
By 5 o'clock.
Yep. By 5 o'clock, not earlier. So that's, we've got a little time there. And then I just wanted to come, appreciate you also sort of talking about kind of public participation and engagement with this. I think, you know, if we were to move ahead with this, the other thing that I'm mindful of is we do have a lake structure policy that I think we'd want to adhere to as well. So glad to hear that you've already kind of forecasted out public engagement with that as well. Let me open up to questions from the council. Julie?
This is really great and I've heard Judy and others talking about this for years, so it's exciting to see it come forward. I guess I would just add to your maybe list of initial consultations, the Boys and Girls Club, given that they maintain the, the community voting. I'm just kind of thinking of like areas where they might not have good visuals on people or things like that.
Okay.
It's also a partnership for the education component that you're talking about.
Definitely.
It would be great to have their support and their thoughts on it.
Okay, maybe, I'm not sure of a specific contact, but maybe if you know of one, you could email me. Yeah, Steve can definitely get you in touch with it. Awesome, thank you. I think they'd be a great partner and I imagine. I think that's a great idea. Yeah. Perfect, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Other questions or comments? councillor McLean? Counselor McLean?
I think I'm curious about, you know, the floating wetlands have been out there for a while. Why are we getting this three days or four days before the September 15th deadline?
Uh, that's the way the schedule works out, but I'm very confident that I can have the application and I plan to have it in by Thursday.
Right, because the one I got today is just a blank, 20 pages, right? I mean, have you started a partial application?
Right. So I actually have started the application, but I was not ready to share it. Um, let me just say that I didn't really go through and write up the full application and that literally has to do with the fact that I'm a part-time worker. I don't have enough time and I didn't want to go through the effort of spending all of this time, um, put, filling in everything and for it to potentially not move forward. I know that may sound unfortunate, but that is, that is just where I am these days, trying to be as efficient as possible.
Sure, I appreciate that. Are we confident that during the pilot year, that all costs would be covered by the grant? I have heard that and I'm just curious as to whether we're comfortable at least during the pilot year.
I am.
Yeah, definitely. I think we, we, we have the ability to scale this appropriately. So, you know, we're, we're going to go after the, the max 50,000. That's what Charles River received. We're hopeful that we would get that. Um, even if we get less, we can just scale it down. So this, this project, the, the, one of the good things about it is essentially taking these little blocks of floats essentially, if you want to look at it that way, and connecting them like little Legos. So we can definitely, um, scale it up or scale it down as needed to stay within budget.
Will you, Bill, do the monitoring, testing, or will that be done by a consultant?
Third party. Third party. We have, we have a consultant that we use for testing, um, for our outfalls already as part of our NFTs program. So I would, I would, um, have them do the testing for us.
And what is the unit hauled out by? Motorized boat boats, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. And those will probably have to be, are they, can they get it out there if they're limited to the, uh, size engine that we allow on Quanapowat?
Yeah, yeah, we're pretty, we're confident with that.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for the presentation and the creativity here. Um, I guess when, whenever we talk about the lake in any capacity, I'm always incredibly sensitive to what the public reaction is going to be because it, it is the crown jewel of our town. And, um, I'm a little bit discouraged by the fact that, that it doesn't sound like it's going to have any material impact on like water quality, right?
Yeah, well, on the whole, on the lake as a whole, probably not. I think that's what Rebecca was saying, but that doesn't mean that we can't look at it in smaller areas and see the benefits and determine if we want to scale up. So we're really doing this as a pilot to see if we're getting any appreciable benefit in the, the small location that we're looking at. And I, I have some ideas on how we can, we can do that potentially to keep the, um, the, you know, the flow of water kind of within this, certain areas through different curtains and things like that, so we can test in specific spots.
So I'm just trying to be mindful too of the fact that, um, I'm not convinced that a majority of residents are looking for more structures, be they natural or otherwise, in the lake, if that makes sense. You know, like the lake is, I mean, the lake is the lake and it, it looks like it does. And, um, I understand that this has a potential to create some beautification and it, almost like a floating mini-island, if you will, it sounds like. So, but I'm just trying to think about how this piece fits into the bigger picture of improved lake quality, which I think is, is important. I don't think that having a number of these across the lake in years to come is, is something that may be aesthetically pleasing for some folks or perhaps a majority of folks. I don't know.
Right, and I, I think that's a great point. Um, counselor, so, you know, one, one of the ways I'm looking at this, again, I, I think I mentioned before is that we're, we're really space constrained in that section. So I didn't have really an ability to dovetail a bunch of these outfalls and kind of daisy chain them to one location. So if we look at the Cove section, that would be the section where I think that we would look to grow and stay within that area, at least as a starter. Um, even if we're successful with the small pilot that we do, um, I, I would envision we expand in that location because I'm, I'm space constrained. We'll have the ability to do more on, um, you know, on-ground treatment in other locations and we, you know, we're, we're looking to consolidate, um, you know, I think we, we, we consolidate from 16 or 18 outfalls down to eight. So, um, this is one of the ones where I really didn't have room to, to do much, uh, in the way of treatment. So, um, you know, I, I would say, you know, it's similar to, to what you see with the other, um, you know, the other locations. We've had some success with, with treatment in, um, you know, in the, the two we've installed so far. So, you know, we're trying to find all these spots through the lake and, and, you know, treat everything we can get coming in. We're also looking at, you know, the potential for in-lake treatment down the road. We have some preliminary testing that we're looking to do in the sediment, which was recommended at one of the Friends of the Lake, uh, meetings where they brought in, um, you know, a, a specific, um, company that does that type of work to help us make some decisions on what makes sense. Um, so, you know, we're looking at all of the different facets of it. So, um, you know, like any, I think I said this before, it, it's, it's not a, a one-pronged approach. We don't just install by our attentions and now our whole entire, you know, lake is clean. That's not going to happen. So we have to go with all these different, you know, technologies. So I, I, I think this is a great, um, opportunity and something I was already tracking to do. So I, I just think we're just kind of speeding up the process a little bit and then, and doing it as a quick pilot to see if this works. And again, we're applying for a one year to see, um, if it makes sense. So if we don't like it, um, we can definitely remove it.
And that's, so that's my other concern because when we talk about the, the, the public engagement aspect of this, um, we're a little, it's, our sequencing is a little bit different in this instance because you're basically asking us as a body to approve the, the, uh, progression of, of an application that would result in us presumably or potentially being awarded it. So the input wouldn't be as to whether we should do this, but instead how it should look. And so I, I guess if, if we're going to go forward with this, I do think that, you know, pilot, you often hear pilot programs. I'd say in most cases, at least in our town, pilot programs become permanent programs. And so I don't know that, you know, I, I'm buying that, oh, after one year, like that'll be it. I do think that given the nature of, of kind of the sequencing of this, that it's super important that if we are to do this, it truly is a pilot program. We have, you know, measurables relative to that. And we get the community input, not just on, oh, what should this look like, but is this something that you want to have going forward? So it truly is something, you know, and where we get the community input throughout the course of, of the year, presuming that this were, were to come to be. Because it's entirely possible the community may love it and if that's, that's great. But I want to know that versus just kind of speculating. And I think we're in a position to only speculate right now. So, um, I, I guess I'm asking for a more rigorous, um, approach to ensuring that this pilot program is truly that and we spend the entire year getting not just the data you're collecting, but the feedback from residents on a regular basis. That, that to me is really important because I, I, you know, I'm not the engineer here. I'm not the conservation person. You know, you guys are the experts, so you're the subject matter experts on this. Uh, so I'm, I'm putting faith in, in your recommendation certainly, but I do also, I think it's important, to me, it's important that the community be able to have that ongoing input as to whether this is even a good idea after it's in place.
I think we'll be very clear in our application. Make sure we cover that.
Uh, other counselors? Uh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Just a couple of quick questions about the process. Have you been, been able to ascertain that you don't need favorable, um, support from the Conservation Commission and you don't have to contact M A D E P about the chapter 91 license before you apply for the grant? So you can apply for the grant and then look to see whether you need to get a license or not and you need to get favorable action from the Conservation Commission?
So, um, I think that as far as permitting through the Conservation Commission, um, this has an opportunity to be seen as an ecological restoration project and that gives, um, special circumstances under the Wetland Protection Act. In the event that, that it didn't work out, it's also can be viewed as temporary. It would have a minimal footprint at the bottom of the lake. So as I was mentioning, it would impact land underwater, which would be the resource area under the Wetland Protection Act that that would be impacting. It is pretty minimal. I'm certain that we can design it so that it can be permitted and receive an order of conditions. I'm relatively confident with that. Um, similarly, the chapter 91 license, again, where this could be temporary project, depending on what it is. Um, I don't anticipate too much trouble going through the, um, chapter 91 process. So I'm, I haven't done it, but I, I mean, I have done that process before, but I haven't done it with this project, obviously, but I'm relatively confident that those are not significant hurdles.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Just one other question. Bill, it's been some time, has it not, since, I believe we had an ANSYS study years ago that was more comprehensive as to the phosphorus levels in the lake?
Yep.
Um, how long ago was that? Was that 10 years, 15? Do you have any recollection?
That was in the 90s, I believe. 90s or early zeros.
Shouldn't the starting point here be, and I'm not being critical of what you're bringing forward today, but if we're saying the phosphorus levels are low, are high, or I think we say high, um, based on a study in the 90s, shouldn't the starting point be to find out what we're dealing with now so that then we can figure out whether the things we're doing in the future help what we have now?
So we know, we know for a fact that, that the, the plant will uptake phosphorus and nitrogen. We do know that as a starter, right?
Not, no argument there.
Right. Um, I think, and I had mentioned this, I think, when I was responding to, to Counselor Dubrowski's response was, um, that we're looking at sediment testing. I think that's one of the things we didn't do well in the, in the previous report. Um, and that really dictates, you know, whether it's, you know, how soluble the, the, the actual nutrients are, whether it gets up into the water column, whether it's bound to the soil. We have a, ability to figure all of that stuff out and make other decisions that we would. I don't, I think these are all independent. They don't have to be, you know, um, they, they can be mutually exclusive. I think we're trying to, to, the overall goal obviously is to, to, to reduce nutrients in the lake. There's plenty of other ways we're going to do that. I'm, I'm looking at a, a bunch of other solutions besides just the ones that we've talked about. So, you know, I think, you know, the more that we can, I would try to pilot as much as we can in the lake and, and see what sticks and what works. I mean, we want to do it as much as we can.
That just seems to me to be somewhat separate from the question, which is should we have a comprehensive study done as, as was done in the 90s to let us know where we are as a starting point?
Well, I mean, the comprehensive study was, was abundantly clear that we need to look at the, um, the nutrients that are being discharged from the surface, from our, you know, watershed into the lake. That was pretty much the result of that. And we're just starting all of that work right now from that study. Then I'm looking to do a sediment study to understand what we have within the sediment in the lake. So, you know, this is just a belt and suspenders, additional treatment type of thing. So I, I, I don't see it as something that we would have to do a separate study at this point. We've definitely done some studies. What we need to do is start doing actionable items that are going to show some improvement. That's, that's what we want to be doing.
And when, when Rebecca says that you have limited space to work with, I just want to be clear, we don't have a problem, do we, with the work that you want to do relative to, uh, preventing some of the phosphorus from coming into the lake in the first place? You're, you're, you're still going to be able to do all that?
Yeah, yeah. This, the, the location we're looking at, the, the Cove location is one of the areas where I'm very space constrained up on, on Main Street. So as I was envisioning the project and consolidating the outfalls and all of that, that was one location where really I, um, you know, we were providing minimal treatment. So this, this helps and I think is a good solution due to the, the kind of our existing condition or configuration.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Danighi?
I'll just say thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really good and you answered the questions that I had was that it's supported by, you communicated with Friends of Lake Quanapowat, Quanapowat Yacht Club. My questions were, is there a cost to the town? You already answered that. Is staffing limited staff? And what I really like is the community engagement piece of this. I think that's really exciting and it gives us an opportunity to be communicating about some of the really pressing issues that are affecting our world, you know, not just Wakefield that we can kind of address on a micro level. So, thank you.
I just say that if the community likes rubber duckies in the lake, then they should love this.
Well, they might get some more real duckies with the, with the floating wetland.
I'm all in favor and I think starting at the pilot level is really the only way to go, so.
All right. Seeing no other comments, um, I'll entertain a motion. I, I would ask perhaps for a motion just to authorize the submission of the grant on Friday and, and maybe if the, the council's amenable to that, uh, would request that, you know, if we do get awarded the grant and when we find out what it is, that we have you come back and, um, you know, take sort of separate action around approvals related to cited something. But, you know, given the scope of what I think, what we're hearing, Ms. Davis, you need to move forward with the grant application. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the submission of that application.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dubrowski?
Are we holding Ms. Davis to Thursday?
You can. I'm intending to, I mean...
Yeah, I just did.
Yeah. Realistically, I think it has to be.
This is recorded, isn't it?
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, the motion is to approve the submission of the grant. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed at seven zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing that application submitted, uh, Thursday or Friday.
I'm gonna say Thursday.
I hope so.
You're staying.
I am, I'm on next.
All right.
Round two.
Mr. Renault, Veterans Field Parking Lot Improvements and Restroom.
I am in the A chair for this one, so.
You, you seem to be in the only chair for this one.
There you go, straight room. All right, so I, I have a very short PowerPoint, which is kind of new for me. Usually I have a, a bunch of slides, but, um, so basically...
You're learning.
I'm learning, yes, yes. I, I, I listen to my boss when he tells me to be brief. So, um, so basically this project was approved as an ARPA-funded project. We identified a few things. One, um, a reconstruction of the parking lot to include some, uh, nature-based solutions on the, um, uh, within the, within the median area within the parking lot. So it kind of shows an example here of what that looks like. Essentially, water would flow over land. We'd regrade the parking lot to, to flow into the center island where, where the dead trees are today. Uh, we would replace that with new plants as well as new trees that will grow in that wet condition. As part of that, we would also look at doing in one large project, a, um, the new bathroom location, because that's how the, we, um, we structured the, the ARPA funding. So, um, what I've provided you and what I would hope to get out of today would be locations. So that helps me move forward, at least with design and anything, costs and that type of thing. So what we've identified is three locations.
One, kind of within the area of where the, where the farmer's market is for site one. You have a photo up towards the top that shows that. Second location being.
Sorry, Mr. Renault, is that actually the photo number three?
That would be photo three. It looks like I flipped my photos. All right. Well, thank you.
One and three reversed.
One and three reversed. There we go. All right. Thank you. There you go. So, so looking at photo three for site one, kind of shows the area that right now there's an existing kind of a big shrubby thing that's there today. Second location is, is basically next to the, the bleacher location. Right now we have a water bubbler there and it's kind of a little no man's land, which seems to look as a good location for it. And then the third location, which is picture one, is behind the backstop, which was a preference of, I believe, our town administrator on that one? No? Not a preference? You like two? Good. I like two as well. So two probably is the cheapest because we already have a water line that's there today, so we would look to reuse that. In all of these situations, the sewer would have to be pumped to the system into North Ave. So really from that standpoint, from sewer, doesn't really make a difference. But we'd like to save some money on water lines if we can. So between two and three, those really for me are, are the ones that make the most sense. But there was some discussion of folks wanting to be closer to the farmer's market. So, so that's basically kind of location wise in the conceptual site plans. Restroom styles, I've identified, you know, a, a kind of off-the-shelf model version of these that are, that are a block structure. However, we have. We're losing a coun, we're losing a counselor. So kind of gives an idea, we would envision two, two rooms, a, a male and female room. And then we would also, or potentially just two bathrooms rather than gender-specific. I would envision definitely looking at a water bubbler or filling station situation that's on the building. I, I actually think the idea of having the overhang kind of canopy thing makes a, a lot of sense for folks as they're going, if they're in the rain and they want to grab water while they're, you know, waiting for their, their folks in the bathroom, it makes sense. We've asked, been asked by our, our building folks to, to look at utility storage. All three of these have significant utility storage. One to the full right is, is the largest of the three, but it does provide the most amount of storage for our folks and to, for different things down at the, down at Vets Field. These give you an example of kind of three different looks that you can have. You know, I wouldn't envision that we would keep the block. I think that we'd probably look at some type of board struts, system. That's why I'm showing that on the far left. I don't think that's the size. They don't really have good pictures to show kind of how I would envision all of this pulling up, being pulled together. But so giving you a few examples of what they look like. But I, I do like the overhang idea. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to have the trust per se, but something to that effect. So, so that's really what I have. A goal of a, of a, of a location would be ideal today. I think we're, we would be looking, you know, in October to have the larger meeting to talk about finishing examples and I'd, I'd look more into that. I've been, the historical commission has reached out to me as well about attending their meetings to discuss this. And, you know, I'm happy to do that. They have some ideas, I think, of what they would like it to look like as well. So that's my presentation in a very short nutshell, because it's not a lot yet, because we haven't designed it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the cons, council? Any preferences on, on location? Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank, thank you for this, Mr. Renault. I think that this is going to be a great addition. As far as the design goes, obviously these were examples, but these are not necessarily kits, right? We can.
Well, they are kits, but they are customizable to some degree. I mean, it, it's a block structure, so they have the ability to. It comes essentially assembled to the site and just gets dropped onto a pad. So as part of my parking lot project, we would include all the utility work and the pad. And then we would have a second contract where essentially they just come in, plop it down, connect all the utilities and work and running.
So they're kind of prefab in a way?
They are. They're prefab. They come rolled in essentially on a trailer.
And then you kind of customize it, like do they extend?
As you need. And they have a few off-the-shelf. I gave you some examples here of sizes and shapes and whatnot. But, you know, I, there's, there's plenty of ways to, to, to outfit this. And, you know, they're very open on all of that, so I just need some direction. I'm assuming we, we don't want a block structure down there. That's a guess. I'm assuming we don't want that, but, you know, we definitely have the ability to put some type of board up. I think that makes sense. You know, whether we go metal roof or we go shingled roof, I think that would look fine too. You know, the historical commission had some ideas on, on some older, I guess they were like kind of sheds in the back of some of the historic area on, on Church Street. So that might be an option that we want to explore as well. So, but I think all of these are open. Ideally for me, I just need where do we want to put it? And then I can start diving into all the details and then be hopefully prepared for our, you know, our October meeting on, you know, styles and really dive in as long as I get some direction from you folks today.
Cause I do think things like, like, you know, when you think of the sightline, I mean, Hartshorn House is.
Yes.
Is there, you know, and so you're kind of thinking about what you're seeing structure-wise. I mean, it's a lot of open space, obviously with, you know. And the other piece to this where it's always, I guess, something I've always kind of dreamed of too is that container that we have that we're using for the farmer's market, which I understand serves an important purpose. Is there any way of incorporating in that storage into this kind of facility? So we can eliminate that metal container that I think does stand out and doesn't look like we.
Well, I'd have to look at the amount of, of stuff they have in there. I mean, one of these has a large, you know, kind of storage area within the back of it. So you could fit some stuff in there. So some of the tents I would, I would think would fit in there. It really depends on how much space they really need. And, and I mean, that container's a lot larger than what we would be looking to do probably. If we were to go and try to, to, to do all of that, you really would have to go with the location further out on the other side of the parking lot. So I don't know if that's where, really where we want it, but that is a, a potential, that is a potential that we would have to kind of evaluate.
Cause I know that that container serves a very functional purpose, but I think aesthetically it really kind of stands out in that area. And you're making all these other improvements, which I think are really important and aesthetically pleasing. And I, I don't think that that kind of fits in with the, the look, you know, if that makes sense.
It totally, no, it totally does. I, I agree. It's funny you mentioned the Hartshorn House too, because, you know, when I first started looking at this, I thought that we would try to mimic the color scheme and.
Right.
So that they kind of, because they're gonna, obviously if you're looking from the field, you, you know, you, the backdrop is.
Some of the trim elements or something or.
Exactly. Color even. I mean, I think that all of that stuff is easy to, to mimic. So that would be something that would make a lot of sense to me. But again, there's other folks that want to weigh in on, on what that looks like, so.
Perhaps through this journey too, if it's some, if it can't be, say, a consolidated facility, perhaps we could think about what we could do to be able to provide the functionality that the farmer's market needs by, but creating a structure that, that's somewhat different than what's currently there. That might be complimentary to what the bathroom would look like.
That, if that's the direction that the, the council wanted to go, that's definitely something we could entertain. We just have to look at funding, but we can figure out where that comes from.
Cause I don't even know, like, you know, the, the kind of what the overgrowth that's there behind it. Does that even make sense? You know, should we clear that? Should we think about something that it would be aesthetically pleasing there in place of what is there?
From my perspective, it makes sense to clear it, but, you know, I, I don't know. You know, obviously it still is within, you know, the buffer from the lake. So that goes with the conservation mission. They do like veg. But, you know, that doesn't mean that we can't replant with something that's, you know, you know, better, you know.
That's kind of like what I'm thinking. Like we, we, we think about this almost like a two-step process. And we're just talking specifically about the bathrooms, but this whole area like, you know, it's not, it's not in a vacuum. We have to kind of think about how it all kind of works, works together, if you will.
Yeah, definitely. And we were looking at some of the sidewalks, actually getting into Hall Park as well. Some of those are, are kind of past their life too. So we would look to kind of expand a little bit as needed. We have a little bit of parking lot money from, from a, a previous fiscal year that we are looking to apply to it as well. So we have a little bit of additional funds. So I think all of those are great ideas. I just need a little bit of direction to.
And the other thing I would caution you on is I noticed just recently, actually, someone driving in, in the exits. You know, how it's like a one, so I don't know if there's a way that we can perhaps, I don't know if it's signage or like painting, do not enter, do not enter signs, whatever the case is, as you're thinking about, you know, this, this island. Are there things that we can do differently so we don't create people, you know, coming in the wrong way going forward?
That's, I think, a signage and that's pretty easy to incorporate.
Great. And thank you for this.
Sure.
So I, I, I would endorse your number two.
Okay.
Number two. Counsel McLean?
Bill, given your current thought process, you have what we have earmarked for ARPA, is that still in line with cost estimates?
Yeah, the cost est, so what I, I think I talked about this at, at my engineering update, but, you know, we hired a consultant that kind of handles bathrooms in general. They pointed us towards these folks. So this, this is the way we want to go. And they're telling me we're within budget, so.
Okay. The, I heard something about storage. Are we adding storage?
Well, in the back of the buildings.
That we currently don't use, like for DPW, is that?
That's part of it. Yeah. I mean, because obviously we'd have to maintain this and, and, you know, clean and that type of thing. So we need some utility area to be able to do that, right? Plus the utility chases for the, for the, for the two facilities.
But it's not going to make it significantly larger. I'm just, I'm always concerned that.
We could.
Something gets bigger and people start talking to us, hey, what are you, what are you doing by the way?
If we, if we elected to try to fit everything into one structure, that could be done. I mean, I think there's, there's options. I, you know, if, if, if the desire of the council was to go with one large structure that handled all of it, I, I can definitely make it work. Just a matter of how big you want the structure to be. This is fairly small. I mean, they're in the, I want to say 24 to 36 foot width and, and probably about 12 to 16 foot deep. And some of them get a little bit deeper if we have a larger room in the back, so. You know, I just need direction on which way we want to go. There's, I'll give you kind of three options of how we can make it work with, with different systems that are off the shelf. But we can look to do anything that the, the council wants to do.
Counsel Danighy?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Dabrowski is that anything we can do to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing and anything that we can do to kind of take the, what we, the storage and kind of combine it or somehow to, to minimize, minimize the obstrusiveness of it. I also had a question. So the aesthetically pleasing, and I'm glad to see that you're working with the historian. You will be working with the historical commission. I think that's great. And if you consulted, is Friends of Lake Quanapow at involved in terms of?
I've, I've broached it with them. They know it's coming.
Okay.
Aside from that, I haven't had any dialogues with them yet.
Okay.
So we're still, I'm still in a very, I'm in a very preliminary locate slot here. So, you know, I'm, I'm really looking for ideas so that I can come to, you know, our October, you know, public forum with some, you know, suggestions on what folks want to see. I'm hearing no block. That is a direction, so that's great. Anything else that you have for ideas, I'd love to hear them. So please feel free to fire them out at me. And doesn't mean I'm only going to come in with one concept. I'll come in with multiple, so.
Right. I just think, I just think including Friends of Lake Quanapow at might be a good idea to get their feedback as well.
Yep.
The other thing I was wondering about is having cameras outside so that if there is an incident, there's something that we have some kind of recording available.
Yeah, we talked, that's usually coordinated on the, on the police side. And we do it in some other locations. So, yep, that's something that's pretty straightforward to do.
And then I'm assuming that it would be locked at sunset?
Correct. Yep. So our public works folks would be the folks that, that close that down.
Okay. And the cleaning, so I've been, I've been too many in different places. And some are very clean and some are very dirty. So it's like, I think the cleaning piece is really important too.
Yep. And so that's our building department and Director Conway. I'm not positive on how he wants to handle that, whether that's another position or if that's somebody that's part-time to handle that specifically. He has talked about kind of the fixtures inside. He prefers to see more steel as opposed to the porcelain, obviously because that's breakable and the steel isn't. So these typically come with steel structures, fixtures, so just as a, as an aside.
And then what I've noticed also, since I've been noticing these, is that they're usually, the doors to go in are actually usually kept open. And I don't know if that's a safety feature, is that?
That's interesting. I don't, I haven't given that much thought. These ones aren't as large as, you know, so if you look at the beach, for example, if that's the one, like the ones you're thinking of.
I see one, there's one on the esplanade, because I've been, been walking, so.
Yeah.
There's one on the esplanade that those doors are open. And then I was in New York City in Central Park. They, those were open as well.
Looking at the folks, so the sizing of those is based on like the, the anticipated use, really. So, I mean, we don't, I don't see us as an esplanade type use. So that's why we're only recommending, you know, the two bathrooms, essentially two stall type thing, so. So, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't envision that we would leave those open. That would, I think folks are going to want their privacy because there's no partition in there, so.
Oh, okay, okay. I just, I just want to just be mindful of, mindful of safety. I think it's a great idea. I think it's needed. I think it's needed. And then you said a water bubbler. Does that also include a refill, filling your water bottles?
Obviously, yeah. Yeah, we are, we're doing that these days, so. That's always included.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Oh, and I, I guess I like number two.
You like number two for locations? Okay.
Counsel Smith-Galvin, I, I have to assume you have comments on this.
I think it's great. Everybody knows I think it's great. I guess, I, I guess I like two. I feel like three, if there were people who are handicapped, it would be harder to get two. I mean, I know that you'll, you have to go along that path and that path is sometimes.
Well, we fixed the path.
Okay.
So the path is fixed. I mean, we, we could look to pave the other section. There's one gravel, small section.
Yeah, there's like a small section. Anyway, I, I'm not, that would be my only hesitation with three. I think the roof, you need something that's not going to make people jump out of their skin when there's a foul ball that hits it, the top of it, because there's going to be a lot of foul balls.
Like a metal roof, is that what I'm hearing?
Hitting that?
That's a good call. Yeah, I like that. Good suggestion.
And then I feel like since we're redoing the whole parking lot anyway, it's, it's hard when you're crossing from Hall Park over to Vets Field to get across. And I know there's going to be stuff in the middle, which is great, but I think we're going to need really good sidewalks. So see where that white car is parked at the top of the circle? Like that should be a very delineated sidewalk with.
I agree. I agree. When I was up there looking at it.
Height so that people can't park there.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the height. I think I got to figure out a way to make it distinctive. Maybe I do it in concrete, so there's a material look or something that'll make it look different.
People don't park on the sidewalk because it's, it's, I mean, it's dangerous to get around that parking lot. So I just think we need better pedestrian ways around that parking lot.
Yeah, we, we have, we have floodplain technically in that section, so I can't really adjust grades that much.
That makes sense.
So I'm adjusting the grades pretty much everywhere else in the parking lot, but that stretch has to stay the same. So, yeah, I could do it with material though, I think, to make it, you know, pop out.
And I guess my final plea will just be bike parking and maybe some covered bike parking. There's no reason that we're doing this that we can't.
Yep.
Put some bike parking.
We actually have a grant application going in for bike parking. So we will look at that, the same, the MAPC grant program.
Okay.
So another one that we're looking at. Yep. Not a structure, but just a, the bike.
That's fine. That's fine.
Just if I could kind of take an informal poll of the group. It seems that there's consensus around site number two. Is, is there anyone on the council that has strong feelings in opposition to that? Or is, is that the sense of the council for Mr. Renault? All right, hearing none, so I think you've got your guidance there.
All right, we're good on that.
I, I know I'm going out on a limb here, but I think there's also a strong sense not to have a cinder block finish on the building. I'm assuming that's fair for everyone.
Sure.
So hopefully that gives you some.
Yes.
Some context. Counsel Dabrowski, you had another comment?
I just wanted to mention that if two also feels like, just thinking about having pass the area regularly, two just feels like a little bit like, a little safer, just because there's more kind of foot traffic and there's more going on. I don't know. It just seems like.
And you also have the walkway coming from, you know, coming from North Ave as well. And you're in that little loop coming around.
It's just more visible and the car's going to be coming by and it just kind of, I feel like you're not, you're there, you know? And I'm, I'm assuming this will be family-friendly, so we'll have changing tables.
Those are in there.
Yep. And then presumably handicap accessible too.
Have to be.
Yeah.
Yep. As the accessibility coordinator, that would be bad if I.
Well, I know.
Although I'm supposed to be on that disability commission right now, so.
And I think they should be gender neutral. No reason just to have two.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Sorry, I had a coughing fit, so I missed some of your presentation. But was gonna echo what Counsel Dabrowski said and what Counsel Smith-Galvin said, is make them gender neutral and also changing facilities and large enough to have strollers. And I also just wanted to mention, I went to Yentile Farm in Wilmington last weekend.
I used to live in Wilmington.
And I was in awe. And I think we should maybe have a field trip up there because.
I know it will.
They have a covered structure with picnic tables, not for this location, but I think it's something we think about, Steve, and some of our other parks as our weather gets more erratic, to have somewhere where families can go under for five minutes. They had bathrooms and, and, you know, sidewalks and pavements of strollers and wheelchairs could go really easily. And they had an amazing playground. I was in awe. I don't know how they got that money, but if you could call the town manager out there.
If I hop in my Wayback machine, because I actually lived in Wilmington when they were building it.
I'm guessing it was some sort of site that got donated to the town.
Pretty sure it was CPA and they were able to purchase the property and then it was funded with CPA.
But their, their structures were unbelievable and it was so packed and they were really thoughtful. They had little gardens that educated about butterfly pollinization. And they really, I love this middle part because it's just such a wasted part right now, the, the plants. I think it's such an improvement, so I, I, this is great. I think it's a great step. And I think the bathrooms, I mean, it's, it's going to help families and everyone at the lake. So I think it's great and I don't think it's scary. I think other towns have done it. So, yeah.
Okay, cool.
But field trip to Wilmington, Steve. We should go up. It's an awesome park.
I was thinking more to Gloucester for lobster rolls later.
Go up to New Hampshire after 93. I just had never seen it. I grew up here and never knew it. And it was, it was a great park.
Other, other suggestion would be looping in WCNA as well. I mean, I think they, they have really good design aesthetic eye. They've done some really good work, especially down by the playground there. And this perhaps could become like a model for some of the locations potentially in the future at other points around the lake.
Around the lake, yeah, trying to follow the same theme type thing?
Right. That's what I'm thinking. So like kind of an aesthetic that would be pleasing and not stand out. I think the goal here is to not have this stand out, but to just blend as naturally as we can. At least, that's my aesthetic.
Well, to that end on outreach, if there are no other comments on the restroom for now, actually to go out of order, we do have a, a please.
Yep. All right. So if, if everything lines up perfectly, we would be looking at probably, I'm thinking probably fall next year. Yeah, the, the utility work and the site will happen. The design will happen over the winter for spring construction. And then really there's a lead time on those, on the bathrooms. So once we decide what we want that to be, that's four months or so. So that's something in fall would be my, my target for our timeline. Yep. Sure.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, so because this is a lake structure, this also activates our lake structure policy. And so I'd like to take the agenda out of order just to move to item 10B, which is to schedule a public hearing for the Veterans Field restroom for October 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Seconded.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor for the public hearing on October 5th, please say aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. So that'll be open to the public for general comment from anyone. Encourage anyone who's watching, who's interested in this project or has feedback to come to, come to that on the 5th. We'll have that available on Zoom as well.
And email me if you have anything before that.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Renault. Appreciate it.
You want me to stick around for?
Yes.
Yes, can you give me the clicker?
Sorry, Counselor Butt, just add, that's, I do want to clarify, that is outside of a regular town council meeting.
Yes.
So we anticipate that this will have kind of more interest than the typical licensing hearing that we do. So we, we do want to hold a separate date so that we're not taking up, uh, an hour plus of, of a town council meeting. I don't think we have the location set.
We can, we can do it here.
We can do it here?
We'll do it here on lot, not a legitimate.
So here plus, again, a, a virtual option for folks. Great, uh, item 6C is the ARPA update. Uh, Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. And, um, as the, uh, we're here for our quarterly update on ARPA funds. And this is pretty much up to date. Uh, I don't have today's warrant yet, but I did add a couple of things. So anyways, um, we know that we received a little over eight million dollars in Opera and that was really based on, uh, um, town population and getting a county share because as we discussed, the rest of the country is a county government. So, um, when this came through the federal government, we got, uh, credit for being in the county where Middlesex County really is not active. Um, we've gone through a number of expenditures in the, um, over the years, um, including in our fiscal '24 budget, which we just passed a town meeting and you will recall that through a few, um, departments that actually have money, um, in this fiscal year that we're currently in. In my previous, um, in my previous, uh, presentation, I had missed, um, the fact that we increased our, um, emergency management director's hours that we had to during fiscal year '22 and that was covered from, from Opera, uh, greatest money ever spent. So that was a correction that I needed to make last time. We've gone through these numbers before. We spent a lot of money on school and first responder overtime, contact tracing, test kits, um, clinics, elections, town meetings and other assistance, fire department overtime, um, in the fit court, um, which this council voted on May 9th, 2022, um, to put that in. And that is actually going great guns and, um, my understanding is that the, um, clinics that are being given through the, um, a council on aging are really well attended down there. So that's really going very well in that area. So, um, take it, take time and see it. So where are we on the money that the town council approved, uh, in November of 2022? A number of items and if the council recalls, you know, we took a lot of, um, surveys and went out and asked people and the council all, all weighed in. Um, the energy assistance fund, um, uh, which was to help people with, uh, gas, electric and oil bills. I guess wood was included too, but I don't think we had too many people that are, that asked for, for wood money. But luckily, in a sense, um, this did not, um, we haven't used as much as we had, might have anticipated. And I think that this next year though, we're going to find a lot, I think that's going to expand in this coming winter. The actual, uh, we're working very well with, uh, M G L D, you know, when they're getting the people coming in and having issues with, if the gas or electric. And really those that are on oil, um, the oil companies are really becoming our biggest, um, uh, sources of, um, media on the sources of, uh, marketing is they're, they're talking to their clients, they're talking to their people. And people are actually coming in now, uh, that didn't take advantage of this last year to sign up for this next year. So I think we're seeing more of that, that, that I'm very happy about. So we'll be monitoring that. Uh, remember, we, we don't have to, we, we need to expend this by 2026. We've already earmarked these, so it's not a big issue. But it's nice that we have that money there. Lake Quanta Power Cleanup and Vets Field, we already talked about that. About 44,000 has been spent in some of the engineering on that, um, or at least that's what we've been built for it. And that'll be going out more and more as we go forward. But there is 800,000, I think, in that, uh, as I think Counselor McLean had a question. Did we have enough to do that whole area? And hopefully we do. Right, Bill?
We believe we do.
One of the areas that we haven't, um, uh, been on the ground yet is the lake pathways area and that is, um, our engineering department, uh, we're designing roads and sidewalks. And the next thing is they'll get to doing those pathways. So I imagine we'll see that actually worked done next year.
Yeah, yeah, we're, you'll see some money spent, um, this fall. So we're going out for our, uh, survey contract for all the projects that'll be happening next year. That project is one of the ones that we're going off the survey for.
Rail, rail trail, um, mobility, that's about the same, that's the, that, uh, contract has been awarded and you are seeing some work being done on the rail trail. I'd love to get, see our, um, easement, um, uh, with the rural company all set and ready to go, we can actually start using it. So I know Tom's working with, Mullen's working with the M B T A, who doesn't move that quickly at all, as we all know. Tree replacement, we actually have been using other, uh, funding before this. I think we're going to see some more money spent this fall and next spring. But we actually had some other money that came in from, here's that microburst, a lot of it came in from femur and memur at that point. So we have used that money and, um, it's been kind of a strange year to plant trees. So, um, it's been either way too hot or way too, way too rainy. Sidewalk expansion, this is a very exciting portion of this. And as the, uh, council remembers, we looked at a number of sidewalks and great work done by our engineering department to really put the whole package together for Parker Road, Elm Street, Lowell Street, Montrose Ave, Water Street, um, portions of the Hunt, portions of North Ave and what have you. And really because we did such a great job, and I'm, when I say we, I mean our engineering department putting that all together and put that whole bid out together, we, that bid came in at 776,000, which was really lower than we thought. Cost of curbing came down a little bit and I think because we were so expansive and ready to go and get shovel in the ground, I think we opened that bid up in August, end of August.
We did, yeah.
And you're already seeing work being done.
Uh, not yet, no.
Not yet, not that, about the other part.
So that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks for that sidewalk, etc.
So they're, they're coming out there. So that's, that's been awarded, so I think that's something we'll be coming back to maybe to look to add, um, more streets or if the council decides to redistribute that elsewhere, more sidewalks, I should say. So we'll be looking at that. W C A T, that was, uh, already expended, so we have, um, I think $250 that we can redistribute somewhere else. We have our water truck that we talked about last time, conference room, Zoom hybrid upgrades. This has been another real, a supply chain issue. And actually, um, this has been increased to about 45,000 now, but I just paid a, a bill on that one. So that's going to be coming, uh, probably towards the end of October. We'll have a lot of the hybrid ribs done, uh, rooms done. The ADA swing, I actually have a picture in the package later on. We'll have one at Dolbear, uh, coming up and there is one at Walton that, um, unfortunately, the clamp or the bracket a piece came in broken on it, so, uh, from the manufacturer. And that comes in, that will be done. I don't know if Counselor Chines knows, has that been hooked up yet? It's a matter of days.
I don't think it has been yet.
It's a matter of days, so that's coming. The Civil War Monument Evaluation, um, $9,850, we spent that before. We have gone out to, uh, bid on that per, uh, town meeting vote and, uh, I think the bid came in a couple thousand dollars under from what we had, I think, a couple hundred thousand, a couple thousand. Couple hundred would have been great, a couple thousand. And the title searches, um, that we talked about, this is looking at all of our other land tax titles. Very important that we know exactly how we have it and how we own it and in some, some instances, if we own it. So we are chipping away at this and I've got to look at my sheet here because I can't read that file without my glasses on. So we're about a little bit over $2 million, uh, that we have actually expended of that. Oh, here is the, um, on the right hand side, I think it's so really cool, the, um, accessible swing that, um, and this will be at the Dolbear School. This is the layout that's going to be there coming up and that's really, uh, really going to make some, some kids really happy to use that. They really feel good about that. So I thought it, it's kind of hard to visualize until you kind of see it and come in and slide around. So we still have a couple of million dollars that has been unappropriated yet. We have until 12/31/24 to do that. And I think that perhaps if the council can be thinking of some things, we might want to consider, um, looking at that maybe at the, in the December meeting or coming up. We have to have this appropriated by 12/31/24, so, you know, it seems like it's a long way away, but, um, a year passes very quickly around here. So, um, it doesn't have to be spent until 2026. So that's where we are. I think, um, the, uh, most of it's in the engineering department, uh, or in the D P W department. They've done a really good job. We have been saddled with some, um, things like can't get curbing, can't get, um, the hybrid, the hybrid, uh, equipment. Getting that in has been like pulling teeth, but, um, I think we're starting to see a lot of this will be done over the next, um, few months. And that's it, real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Great, uh, thank you. I'm going to take sort of the chair's priority, uh, prerogative to make a, a comment, which is on the sidewalk piece. I, I think, you know, we, we know that, you know, in addition to sort of the projects that we had kind of prioritized for ARPA, there's more to be done. And so my, my personal preference and certainly this is up for the council's discussion is I, I think we could probably find another $300,000 worth of sidewalk projects to, uh, to spend.
He's smiling over there, I think he already has it in his.
He does, yes, he does, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, we heard, for example, the Walton Safe Route to School piece is a good example. We know there are some additional sidewalks there that haven't been prioritized. So again, my, my personal preference as one counselor would be, I, I would love to see that remaining money that we allocated for sidewalks actually spent on, on sidewalks. Uh, I'll take it, uh, some questions, Counselor McLean?
Steve, just one quickly, the Astroscon rail trail, is that because, you know, simply the million dollars isn't.
The, the bid was awarded, but it hasn't all been spent.
Right, hasn't been spent. Would we see some action on that million dollars?
You will see it very quickly, yeah. So our, um, our consultant will be out, um, in a bunch of locations doing some survey, doing, uh, borings for new, um, foundations for the, um, uh, for the signal mast arms. Uh, they're also doing some traffic studies. All of that stuff, um, will be happening, um, within the next, next month or so. I'll be meeting with them, I believe, Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday this week to get all that stuff going, so.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Uh, on the point of sidewalks, I think that, um, it's, it's very encouraging and anyone who's, who's gone for runs around town knows that one of the most frustrating things is if you're on a sidewalk and it just suddenly stops. And that North Ave stretch from the highway to church, what's going on there now? I love seeing cones around town because that means too much progress. And there are a heck of a lot of cones along North Ave right now. And that stretch, which I guess is, I guess, the western side of the north, of North Ave. That's, I think that's going to be transformational for that space, um, truly, because it was a, a bit disjointed. There was some sidewalk, it seems, some kind of like flat space, some dirt. And that's, you can just see it already, just how it's been dug out, what that's going to mean. So I'm really encouraged by that and I know that down the road, the idea of that intersection of North Ave, um, and church and like that is going to be reexamined by you as well.
Yeah, we reexamined it, we, we have already started looking at it. So we're, we're thinking of, um, initially we had talked about in front of the, um, in front of the car dealership, not including that in the bid because I was concerned about, you know, mast D O Ts work to get, you know, underneath the highway. So we've incorporated that in, um, as a change order with some of the savings. We'd like to do that if, if the council's okay with that and allowing us to have the money. I'm assuming that, I'm, I'm seeing some nods, that's good. And then we have plenty of other locations, I'm happy to come in and say here's where we think we should go for other sidewalk locations.
But I, I think you had mentioned a few meetings ago, also on your radar is like kind of where church and North Ave are, like by Vets Fields in essence, like that's a longer term project, but thinking about how to improve the safety there.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't have enough money with what's left there. I see that as a, I see that as its own standalone, probably a tip project realistically because of the amount of, of, um, coordination that's going to be needed with, um, with the folks at M B T A. And in my experience so far, it hasn't been great dealing with the M B T A and, and getting, and any of the things in the phone calls back, right, Tom? Is that sound about right?
But, but I, I do think that quarter is going to be all the more important. And, and today, in fact, it was actually, I just saw a sign that was posted, um, in Reading and it was talking about the town of Reading launching the design of Walker's Brook Drive Quarter Project.
And I'm cool, uh, we've coordinated with that. So I have a standing monthly meeting, um, with the, the Mystic Highlands Greenway. That's all part of the Mystic Highlands Greenway discussion. We're the first to get that going really with our, our, um, plan for North Ave. They're dovetailing with our project, so that's something that we've been working on. The question is the connection across the highway and we've been talking to Mast D O T on that. That's in their court, um, for some of their discretionary spending and I've been advocating for that, so.
So because they're actually, the, with the way that they're selling it is it's the primary connector between Reading and Wakefield and serves as a major connection to Lake Quanta Power.
So, you know. I don't disagree with it.
Yeah, so I'm seeing that as, as, you know, a, a funding opportunity that doesn't come from the Wakefield taxpayer necessarily and probably think about how we can do that, maybe at the state level perhaps. And so, but it sounds like that's well underway with coordination with Reading.
So they're going to do a shared use path similarly to what we were doing on North Ave. I, ideally, I'm assuming on the same side because we've already let them know, they have our plans, they're planning to dovetail with us on that. So the question is how we would kind of repurpose the, um, the section under the highway. And there's a lot of traffic that goes through there, so a lot of that is related to Mast D O T and how they want to reconfigure their turning lanes, whether it was road diet type things, we could add the, the extra space. You know, we are constrained with the bridge, so.
Right.
Those abutments, unless they're looking to redo that whole bridge, um, which I don't think is in their, they're, in their, in their plans right now. But if it would be, then that would be something we'd advocate for for sure.
Because that is such a great connector. I mean, otherwise, you know, between communities and, uh, creates a lot of accessibility that we, uh, that I think is quite dangerous, kind of like right now.
Yeah, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Uh, other comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Renault, thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to item four, I'm sorry, item 5D, uh, the asset naming policy. Uh, Mr. Mayo?
Yes, as the council may recall, um, I did, um, put together with, um, input from many members of the council and of course Town Council, Mullen, a suggested public asset, asset naming policy. And I put it together because I'm having been through the Galvin, uh, well, I think, I think it's a good idea anyway, but having been through the Galvin building, uh, project, there are items that will come forward for naming of things. I think it's a couple of things to point out. It does point out that with the exception of the library and, um, Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, the town council is the, i- is the, um, is the body that it's, that does name, you know, rooms and, and buildings and things like that in town. Saying that's important, um, parks, squares, whatever. Also in talking to some of the, uh, town council members, um, and I felt that it was, and comments from the last meeting, I felt that it was important, a couple of things, to have a super majority or five members of the town council to name or rename anything with the thought that you don't want this to happen next year and there'd be a flip of one person and you go back four to three, what have you. So a, a super majority, I thought, was better. Also, I think it was Counselor Dubrowski that mentioned, um, uh, duration, limited duration, and that is in the, uh, in there as well. So it has been out there for a while. It is, and they aren't available if the, uh, council wishes to vote on it. I do get it. I think that, um, I, I hate personally naming things. I think it's always, um, uncomfortable, to say the least. But, um, I do think that it's important that there is a somewhat of a roadmap or something that the council can look at, um, when they are, and when that does come down the road. And with that, you know, I, I tried to put in that there should be some historic significance and things like that in it. But it's, it's up to you, it's up to the seven of you what you want to do with it. And, uh, I leave it available for questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Uh, do we have a motion related to the, the policy?
So moved.
Okay.
All right, uh, motion is made and seconded, we'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Dubrowski?
Have we received any, any, um, input or feedback from the public on this policy, Mr. Mayo?
Not of informal nature, no. Or I haven't, I should say. But I will point out that when there is a naming of anything, it does require a public hearing in the policy.
I'm just wondering, would there be any reason to not have this on the website, allow for any public comment to be sent along and then us put on it in the next meeting?
A question actually, it, was it on the website? I thought it was.
It's on the website as part of our packet. Was it on separately as well, Sherry?
I, I don't know.
Yes, I believe it's on separately too.
This, this version had been, because I think the earlier one had been, right?
This one is in the packet.
Yeah.
On our packet now.
Um, yes, the proposed asset naming policy is on, um, is on the town administrative page. Top of the website.
Other comments? Oh, sorry, uh, Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I know we've had a couple of different editions, so they haven't been wildly different, but this is probably the third time we've seen this, right? Okay.
Counselor McLean?
Are you finished?
Go ahead. Uh, I was just going to say that, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't, if we, if there's any benefit to the public commenting on it and I don't, I've not heard a lot of, you know, um, public comment, you know, personally about this. I don't know if that would, would, would matter. I think also folks should just be mindful that this name, I interpret asset to mean literally anything. So if it's a bench, if it's a whatever, you know, because I know we, we've been rather inconsistent with someone, unfortunately passes and the family wants to donate a bench, they, you know, do that. And, um, it's been kind of on an ad hoc basis. I'd like to see this policy kind of more uniformly applied to like, not just the bigger things like a building, but any, the little stuff too. I think that's really important to have that, you know, that continuity. So I, 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 I think if we can put it out and it's, if it's been out in its current form, we've not gotten the feedback, I'm comfortable with that. Unless others feel differently.
Counselor McLean?
I do, and, and I think I've been consistent in our prior discussions saying that I'm not, I, I don't want. not, I, I don't want to be in a position of, you know, voting on, I'm not, as Steve indicated, I agree with him, I'm not big on naming. I think if the town owns these properties, and town owns school buildings, Town Administrator communicates with, you know, the schools on a regular basis, that with all the policies we have, the policies we've tried to quantify, that we still haven't entirely, and the policies that we're going to need to do a lot more work on in the future, I just don't see adding another policy that will probably, in my opinion, invite our having to engage in more as opposed to less decisions as to naming. I, I just don't see the need for it. I just basically don't support the policy, haven't in our earlier discussions. I see the merit in having something out there. On the other hand, the more we say, and then we get into historical significance, et cetera, then we're going to get into a position of, you know, having to pick. And we have so many people who volunteer here, and so many people spend years on various committees, and we have how many, 30 of them, or however many we have. And, and to be picking, you know, I, I prefer to stick with generic names, you know. I, I don't prefer to, I don't think we have to have every room or every lab or every library named after somebody, and that's just the way I see it. So, yeah, I don't think we need the policy. I think if someone, you know, if the Town Council is the authority here and we own these properties, then it should be enough that the Town Administrator, you know, makes that known, and I'm sure they already do, to the school department and to others, that we're not entertaining, you know, a rash of naming requests because we happen to build a new school or whatever. That's just how I feel. Maybe in a significant minority, but that's how I feel.
Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair. This is actually a really difficult evaluation for me. I've spent a lot of hours on this. As I spoke at the last time we addressed this, I've looked up what a half a dozen other municipalities have done. I was an advocate for putting the five out of seven language in there. My hesitation tonight kind of mirrors what Counsel McLean just said. When I look at the policies that we currently have, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a comprehensive list of accurate and current regulations that the Town Council or Board of Selectmen have approved in the past. A number of months ago, when we updated the financial policy, before we updated it, we had to look at the original version, and we didn't know what date it was enacted, and after research, we found out it was enacted in 2012. When we recently did the public participation policy, we, we redid a policy that was part of a 24-page or 24-item document that was presented to the Board of Selectmen in 2009, and frankly, unbeknownst to us, that one piece on public participation was passed in 2009, and that was not on the town website until we promulgated the updated version. And then later on tonight, we're going to discuss three more regulations that are not on the town website, but they're located in something called Ecode Division Two Board of Selectmen, and those regulations have been on the books for, in some cases, a number of decades. So my concern now is adding a new policy to our list of policies, when I'm not comfortable right now that we, that I know the comprehensive list of all policies that have been passed in the past by the Town Council and or Board of Selectmen, and I know that some of the policies that we are cognizant of are woefully out of date. So I, I really don't know. I, I hear Counselor Dabrowski, and I kind of feel, maybe we ought to postpone this to a later date, until such time that we have a concrete list of the current policies and we all understand the current policies we have, and maybe we go through those policies before we start adding new ones in. That's why I say this is a very difficult evaluation for me.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo, just, I know we've talked about sort of having the policies up on the website. Can you give us an update on the status of that?
I think most of them are. Whenever I'm completely sure, I find something else that may have predated my time there. We're going to, we'll continue to do an exhaustive list of them, but I believe that most of them are.
Okay, so any policy that we are aware of, certainly not going back before your, your time.
And some are on the website, they're just a little harder to find.
Other comments or questions? Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think part of my, the way I purchase a little bit is, I almost see this almost as providing guidelines or guidance for those that might be interested in making a request as well. And having been on the council and Board of Selectmen before then, there have been a number of occasions where people have come to us and made requests of naming something. Again, benches come to mind as one example, but that's not the only one, to my recall. And I, I think if we had some sort of guidance, less so for Town, the Town Council, although I think that's also important, but also for those who might be thinking about making a request, okay, well, what are the sorts of things, like, what is the criteria that the town is likely to employ in, you know, if I want to make a request? I think it might help to better inform the decision-making of someone who might be interested in making a request. I don't, like, I don't think we necessarily prescribe what future Town Councils need to do, but I think it kind of creates some level of structure and guidance that we don't currently have for circumstances that do happen in real, in real life. I mean, we've, we've had a number of requests over the years. And so I'm, I'm fine with, you know, not voting tonight and coming back to it if, if there are reasons to do that. I'm also okay with voting on it, but, but I think we have to look at it not just from, okay, why are we doing this for the, the Town Council perspective, but rather for those who might be making a request. And I think a little bit of guidance for them might be helpful, because if I were to go to Steve and say, hey, I'm looking to dedicate something to someone, what's the criteria? I don't, I don't think you'd be able to tell me. I don't, we don't really have any kind of guidance. So I, I kind of see the policy more as a tool in that way for, on the other side of it, people who might be wanting to make requests.
Thank you. Other comments? Counsel Smith-Gatlin?
I really agree with Counselor Dabrowski. I, I am not in favor at all of frankly, naming anything after anybody, but I think that, you know, it's, it's a logical thing that people think about at some point, and they should go and they, and I think that this policy actually is, is, is good guidance. And I think it will make people see that it's not an insignificant process and that it's a pretty high bar. And I think, you know, it's, it will give them guidelines and guidance to come to us. So I couldn't agree more. In terms of not voting tonight, I appreciate that, you know, we should always be striving to have all of our policies obviously up here, unless we think that there's going to be a policy uncovered that would contradict this, that's somehow been promulgated in the last, you know, two years or 30 years. I think that it's our role to make these decisions, and this has been in front of us three times, and I think we should make it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Danahue?
So I, I have, I do have just a question. I am actually, I see pros and cons, and I, I think it puts us all in a very difficult situation of, of having to decide whether, you know, naming, naming after people. I agree. I don't like the idea of naming after people. But I do like that it has to be, that we can't discuss it until, if it's a person who's passed, until a year has passed from the date of the death. I also, I'm also concerned that this could potentially, I don't, probably unlikely, but potentially, could be changing names of things. So I'd like to see something in there that said that is only for new, new construction or new buildings, rather than, I'm not in favor of changing the names of some of the things that we have in town. Like, if somebody could come and make a motion to change the name of the Galvin. And I think that it should just be new, or new construction, or that, like, the new construction.
If it makes with each other, wouldn't that ultimately be our authority, no matter what? I think. Regardless of what this policy says, it only, again, provides the council guidance. It's not, it's not prescriptive that we have to do it. It just creates a framework within which we make these decisions, but I think it'd still be on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
So I think that might allay the concern.
I would, I, can I just respond to that?
Sorry, I was just trying to make sure you answered Counsel Danahue's.
I mean, and, and I agree, and I definitely think it's up to us, but I think that, you know, we've seen in the last, you know, five years or so, that there have been times when assets have needed to be changed in this country, and that may well be the case in Wakefield as well.
Yeah, that's true.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but there may be times that things need to be changed.
Yeah.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the table that's been made and seconded to adopt the asset naming policy as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries six to one. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayo and Mr. Mullen, for the work on that. Moving on, item number six, road signage discussion. Counsel McLean, this is your, your agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, I had a meeting with the Chair and the Town Administrator. I mean, this is a long story, so I'm going to try to keep it brief. The Chair had indicated that he was hoping we could have no idling signs by the lake. I believe I said, I don't think people, it's a big problem that people are doing that very much. In any event, whether we agreed or disagreed, at some point, signs were installed, eight signs were installed, and I asked the Town Administrator what happened. The Town Administrator said that the Chair had requested them. And I did have a response, I, you know, to the Town Administrator, I said, and, and that ends the matter? Because I was a bit chagrined. Further, I think this is all actually not in dispute. No police or traffic input was sought on these signs, no boards or committees were contacted. I was told by the Town Administrator that one other Town Council member knew of the signs, which I thought was a little bit disturbing.
Was you?
Oh, it was me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't know they were going up. I don't think there's any, any dispute on that. And I think the Town Administrator at some point said that he thought there was a distinction between signs as a guide and regulatory signs. I think we've resolved that issue. I think I had researched and found out, you know, because I have two concerns here. I have a process concern, I know that there's going to, there could be some argument, well, this is the way we've done things in the past. It can also be argued, well, it's only eight signs on the lake, but as Counselor Dabrowski indicated, that is the crown and the jewel of Wakefield, and I think some of us are very sensitive about anything that goes up on the lake. I'd just like to reiterate that Section 3.2B of the Charter indicates that the executive authority of the town shall be vested in the Town Council, which shall be deemed to be the chief executive office in the town, and that is not, that is seven individuals elected by their peers. It's not one person, and it's not one person plus the Town Administrator. We have an Ecode Division Two, Chapter 211 dash one, and I think this took care of any controversy we might have had. That indicates clearly that the traffic rules and orders are defined, and official traffic signs are defined as all signs for the purpose of guiding, and that takes care of the guiding argument, directing, warning, or regulatory, regulating traffic. In addition, Chapter 2110, as the signs and signals, says that it's the Town Council's duty to place and maintain or cause to be placed and maintained all official traffic signs, signals, markings, and safety zones. In fact, from what I can find in my research, there is no bylaw in the town of Wakefield or no guidance relative to no idling at all. The only authority I could find is Chapter 96, Sections 16, Cap A and Cap B. I'll start with 16, Cap A, because it applies to these, potentially applies to these signs. And the 16A provides that no person shall allow unnecessary operation in excess of five minutes. There are fines not exceeding $100 for the first offense and not greater than $500 for each succeeding offense. There are CMRs that, for the non-lawyers listening, are Code of Mass Regulations. CMR 310.7, 310, Section 7.11, 7.11C and 7.52 actually come under the DEP. And they provide that any police department, fire department, or board of health official is authorized to enforce these signs. So the initial question then becomes, too, since we have many places one could be idling, and could be idling illegally in the town of Wakefield, why only eight signs on Main Street? That is one question that I have. The other is, under General Law's Chapter 96, Section 16, Cap B, the CMRs are much more specific as to the type of signage, and that involves school zones. And school zones are defined as schools, and it's pretty expansive. It's also playing fields and parking lots adjacent to school buildings, and there are very many regulations, more regulations relative to school zones. My understanding is we, these seem to me to be required, and I don't believe that we have any of those in Wakefield at all. So the only thing we have are eight idling signs on Main Street that this Town Council as a whole was not able to discuss and debate. And that is, so my problem is from a process standpoint. It's also that, I don't think idling is a huge problem, but the law is law, right? But when I'm up running on the lake, which I do regularly, I run by the cars. I know who's idling, who isn't, I can feel the heat, I can see the bodies, I can hear the engines running. I actually stopped the other day and watched a young gentleman who was idling. And he pulled in, and he idled, and he did his phone, and he did the things that people do nowadays. And he took two to three minutes and got out of his car. First of all, at that end, the busy, probably the busiest parking end of the, the lake is up by Lowell, and there, we don't have a no idling sign either for a ways, so in the heaviest place, we don't even have one. And then we have eight that, to me, are unnecessary and aesthetically very unpleasing. But this gentleman didn't violate any law. So the police haven't been consulted, we didn't have Lieutenant Anderson in here, we didn't have traffic involved, you know, as we would with, for example, the parking, new parking sign up at Closet. To me, this is a problem of process, and that is why I am moving today, and, and just as an aside, we also have all these other inconsistent, and that's why I said earlier, we have a lot of inconsistent in this Section 211 and probably in the other Ecode Sections that Counselor Vincent and I both spent some time looking into. We have some real inconsistencies. You know, we have a Board of Selectmen involved that we would waive the overnight parking ban in 2015. At the same time, 211-25 says there's no overnight parking from 1:00 to 7:00 a.m. So there are a lot of inconsistencies in what are our procedures. It's under Board of Selectmen, Chapter 211. So that is why at this point, I move that we immediately take down the eight no idling signs until further consideration by the Town Council as a whole.
Sir, a second?
I second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Mr. Mayo, I don't know if there's anything you want to add from a process or, or history perspective?
No, I, I have, I, I did, you know, talk about that, and I've, I've made it clear over the last, you know, 15 years or so longer, those non-regulatory signs have, have not gone through the whole traffic advisory Town Council for the most part. It could be deaf child, someone comes in and has a deaf child, we'll put a sign up. No idling was a request from the Chair, was, was mentioned, other people have mentioned. And that's just been more of a, that's been the process I've done. I looked at 211-1, and I'm a big boy, and I'm wrong under this, and that's okay. So, yeah, so, but, but it really was all about constituent services or requests from board members or council members.
And just to clarify, when you say non-regulatory signs, you're talking about signs that don't kind of create a new regulation?
Right, they're guidance.
So for idling, for example, there is a state anti-idling statute.
Right, right, and, or, or not. It could be stop sign ahead. I mean, it's, it's a guidance, it's not, you're not going to be fined for rolling through a stop sign, a head sign. It's a little bit different. You know, it's, it's giving you information that there might be a, a child that's hard of hearing on the street, or my favorite, slow children, we'll leave that whole thing aside, but, yeah. So that, that has been the practice for many years, and lo and behold, that was not correct according to this.
Yeah, and, and just to share some cons, since the request did come from me, and it was a request that I, I a request that I think I made in the context of a meeting, Counselor McLean, that you were at. I did not have any follow-up, Mr. Mayo, with you afterwards. The reason I made the request is, you know, as we've been talking about the bike pedestrian plan and talking about parking by the lake, I've spent, you know, every time I have the opportunity to drive by the lake or run by the lake, I've started counting cars now, which is just something you do when you're a town councilor in these things. I would say, on average, I have noticed roughly 20% of cars are idling when I do that. And, you know, the concern is, obviously, there is a state law there. You know, it's an ecologically sensitive area, and so that's a concern, and it's also an area that we all, we all use for recreation. And so that was the genesis of the request. It was certainly not a request intended to kind of shortcut any process. You know, as a town councillor, over the years, I've made probably dozens of requests around signage to Mr. Mayo of kind of the non-regulatory guidance, some of which have been honored, some of which haven't for various reasons, some of which I've made on my own, some of which I've advanced requests from constituents. So that's just some context around how the request came up and the conversation, I'd say the brief kind of offhand conversation that generated it. Counselor Vincent, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. A few months ago, we had to adhere to the bylaw on the Permanent Building Committee because for years we had been appointing them in April, when the bylaws said that they need to be appointed in December. And what I would submit is that it's imperative for all of us, if we make any request to the Town Administrator, to do something outside of going through the entire Town Council, that we have to be mindful of Massachusetts General Laws, the Town Charter, the Town Bylaws, this E code, Division 2, which has nothing to do with the bylaws, that's complete, those three, alcoholic beverages, hawkers and peddlers, and traffic rules and orders, completely falls within the purview of us. And then the policies that we have that are listed on the town's website, financial intervention structure, flag, public transportation, and traffic calming. We have to look through those, it seems to me, before we go and request the Town Administrator to do something. And in this case, although it was well-intended, I'm sure, to put up the no-idling signs, to me, both Chapter 211.1, which defines official traffic signs, and 211 and 10, 211-10, which authorizes the Town Council solely to make a decision concerning those kinds of governance here. And I'll submit that the traffic rules and orders was promulgated in 1961. And from what I can see, it was updated in 2008, at least the attachments were. But I see no instance where the Board of Selectmen or the Town Council ever delegated its authority to anyone, including an individual Town Council member, the Town Administrator, or any other town official or public body. And additionally, the definition of official town signs delineating in Chapter 211.1 remains unchanged. If there was a desire at some point in time in the past to let signs of guidance be done at a lower level, it would have been very simple and easy for any member of the Town Council to raise that as a motion. And, but of course, that was never done. The other thing I'll say to follow up Counselor McLean's comments, Chapter 90, 16A, and 16B are two different statutes. 16B deals with schools, and it has two CMRs that are applicable, 540 CMR 27 and 540 CMR 705. The significant part about 705, it says that each public or private accredited preschool, Head Start facility, elementary school, vocational secretary school, school district or municipality shall erect and maintain in a conspicuous location on school grounds no-idling permanent signage as described below. And then what's on, what has to be on that sign is very specific. What I find interesting here is that we have a couple no-idling signs actually at the Galvin School. I have not seen them at any other school. And the Galvin School does not have signs that comport with CMR 540 CMR, 540 CMR 7.05. But then suddenly, we have signs put up on the Main Street side of the lake, when it seems to me the higher emphasis should be on adhering to the CMR that deals with the schools. What I think we should be doing going forward is having the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Board of Health, the Police Chief, give us a presentation as to whether no-idling signs are needed, both around Wakefield and also at the schools. And perhaps we consult with the school committee and the superintendent of schools to get their opinion concerning whether no-idling signs belong there. Because once again, the school committee doesn't have purview to make the decisions on official traffic signs, that only falls to the seven of us. So once again, just to conclude, because we don't have a process in place, a written process in place, explaining to me how I can go to Mr. Mayo and ask him to do something without going through the entire council, I again emphasize that it's imperative, anytime any of us, including myself, ask Mr. Mayo to do something, that you need to consult with all of these applicable regulations in order to see whether that can be done or whether that just falls within the purview of the entire Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Other comments or discussion? Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, Mr. Chairman, to Counselor McLean. Counselor McLean, did you say that the no-idling by statute is no more than five minutes?
That is correct. And I, just to follow that, if you don't mind, it's clearly stated relative to the schools and the CMRs that you will not only put up signs saying no-idling, you will put up signs that say penalties up, as I indicated, same penalties for first offense and second offense. So you're warning the public as to what it is they can be tagged with if they violate this policy, which is a very good and probably very useful scare tactic. But it's also specific, and I think it would be good to be doing, giving the same kind of warning to somebody in a residential setting as well. If you're going to just say no-idling, you're not telling them what 9016A even says.
Well, I guess that's my point, because it sounds like the sign isn't even accurately representing what the law is.
It doesn't.
Because it's not that idling is illegal, it's that idling more than five minutes is illegal.
Right.
As a first stop. So I think that we're actually putting on misinformation to the public relative to that. I do find the timing and the location of these signs going up curious, given what we have been talking about in recent meetings relative to this stretch of the lake along Main Street. So that does concern me. I, from a process standpoint, I don't understand why they would just go up as they had. I do recall, over the years, a number of times where traffic, generally, traffic advisory would come before us with recommendations that I'd say probably 100% of the time, we probably endorsed. But I do recall at least one instance where there was a deaf, deaf or blind child area, and that was presented before us to allow for a sign. So there have been, there have been instances where those signs have gone up, and I think it is just good practice. I don't think that kind of arbitrarily going and asking for signs to be put up in a location, signs that are not even actually representing what the law is relative to that, makes a lot of sense. And I, I think it's quite curious that these have gone up in a location that they have, when they have gone up, in the context of the broader discussion there. So I would support the idea of those signs coming down. I think it's better practice from a process standpoint for us to be deferring to traffic advisory when, when we're considering these things, and if, and if it's a question about, you know, any kind of environmental impact or health impact, then of course, I think traffic advisory is within its authority to consult with, say, Board of Health or things of that nature. But there's another type of pollution that I think we're facing here, and that's sign pollution. And that's something that we tend to be overlooking in all of this. Like, I don't know how much more clearly certain members of this council can be that aesthetics matter, and aesthetics around the lake matter especially. And if you look at Greenwood Plaza, for instance, across the street from that, there are way too many signs in short sequence. I raised it with traffic advisory, and they, I believe it was a vote here to have them, I think half of them removed, because they were like, it's like every seven feet or six feet, it's the same sign. We can, we can have half as many signs and have the same impact. But if you look at that now, it is a, it is a block of signs. So I think we have to be mindful of that, and I would encourage traffic advisory, who should be the ones, you know, determining this. And if a councillor has, has something that they want to present to traffic advisory or go through Mr. Mayo and say, "Hey, would you mind running this through traffic advisory?" I'm all for that. But I, this idea of kind of arbitrarily just saying, "Mr. Mayo, we need some signs here," that's not the process. And that's not, as long as I've been on the council, that's not how we've done it. We've voted on a number of things, and some of them have felt very, very mundane. But not, but that's a necessary part of this process. And it's all not exciting, but it's all important that we have the authority to be able to do this as a body, not as individuals. Thank you.
Counselor Danny?
Yeah, I would just say that I do think that it might be good practice, and I can understand how things happen, and they're quick, and let's do this. But I think for the purpose of members of the council, as well as members of the town, is having some kind of a process that when something, that we're putting up new signs, and it could just, it could be, you know, putting up a sign in a neighborhood of, you know, deaf child, and that they should all just come before Town Council. It will take no time at all to just say, you know, it's just like how we accept donations from Friends of BB Library. We can do that in that context. I just think for transparency purposes, that it's, that it's important, that it's important. So that's one issue with that. The other issue is, is that the idling issue is that we don't have signs. We are out of compliance with the idling signs at school, so, and I agree that if we have no-idling signs, that those should be clear in terms of what that means, no idling more than, you know, five minutes, whatever the law states. But a greater issue that I keep seeing coming up, that came up earlier, and is with the naming and with this, is there might be a need. When I was on school committee, we had a policy subcommittee. I am not volunteering to be on it or to chair it, but it was something that it seems like we're continuing to have these problems of policies that exist that we're not really aware of, or policies that may be outdated, or policies that we might want to change as a council. And we just, the policy subcommittee used to meet on a monthly basis, and when we did, one year, we went through, the whole entire school committee has this many policies, I think way, way, way too many policies, but those were constantly updated. Those were constantly updated, so we always knew what the policies were and that they existed, so that we didn't all have to go do digging. But I would be supportive also, so I would be, you know, that might be, that's a suggestion that we might want to think about. I think that, you know, the no-idling signs is that I would like to hear, you know, kind of the need for, like, traffic advisory, some kind of a process, so that, you know, whenever a sign goes up, we know that it's traffic advisory recommending it. And it just makes it procedural and something that's on our agenda, that gets posted to the public, so that we and the community knows.
Thank you. Just on your comment around sort of the policy subcommittee, so I think we heard from Mr. Mayo that, you know, we feel that the policies that we are aware of are available. I guess I would ask the council, to the extent that that is something that people want to look at, if folks could kind of volunteer to take a look at that and to volunteer for that committee, I think that would be helpful. I mean, it's great to say we should have a policy subcommittee, but someone needs to actually, you know, do that.
It's just, I mean, it's just, it's, it's something to think about. I mean, it is, you know, on, when I was on school committee, to be honest with you, we had, I think we had too many subcommittees. You know, we are all volunteers, but it has to be that if that's what people think, that that's just a suggestion of what we did. But I think we, I think having things happen and then it not being really aligned with our policies, you know, it seems like that's happened a couple times, so.
So again, I would just put the request out there for everyone.
Yep.
If that's something that people are interested in volunteering to do, to please let me and/or Mr. Mayo know, and we can bring that back up to a future discussion. I have Counselor Vincent, Counselor Smith-Galvin, and Counselor McLean.
Let Smith-Galvin go first, I've already spoken.
Okay. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
About these signs, I really think it was innocent. I think we're all looking at that strip of lake. I mean, I don't know what you were thinking, but I've often thought we needed no-idling signs there. And, and I understand all the policy things, but, I mean, I didn't become a town councillor to vote on every single sign that goes up in town. That's why we have a Town Administrator. And I really fear that a traffic advisory dealing with signs, I want them dealing with safety issues. I want them dealing with things that make our town better. And I get the aesthetics, but I want, I want the town, or the traffic advisory committee really looking at the hard issues, not having to look at every single sign. And I frankly, Counselor Danny, think it's naive to think that we could do it like we do donations. Every single person clearly has a, has a, has an opinion on a sign. So I think that we, you know, if we need policies, we either waive our rights and have the Town Administrator do it, or give him some good guidance as to what we want. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Counselor Vincent, do you want to go back?
Counselor Butt has nothing, she hasn't.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Nope, Counselor Butt, go ahead. Counselor Vincent, Counselor McLean.
Yeah, I do kind of echo what Counselor Smith-Galvin said, that I think we could get taken over voting on signs. I do just want to bump the request, Steve. I think this is maybe my third year now asking for a signed inventory.
That's being done.
Okay, yeah, I've heard that for a little bit. So if we could, I think that would really help, you know, and Counselor Dombrowski talked about signs showing up, and some of them we've voted for, but I think last year, on one block in Greenwood, overnight, because I drive that way all the time, there were three new signs, and none that we approved. You know, one was a Purple Heart Community. I think that's by your street, Julie. Like, I don't know how that went up. And so I think a signed inventory would really help. And then we can, we can talk about, you know, empowering Steve to make that decision. It's a decision between Steve having, if it's a public, public safety, then, you know, bringing in Lieutenant Anderson and that committee. But I don't, I'm not feeling the need to vote on every single sign. That just seems a little excessive and not my job, the job of the Town Administrator.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
I would, thank you, Chair. I would completely agree with you on those points. Where this gets confusing is we have an E code where Division 1 is bylaws, and the bylaw review committee looks at those. And Division 2 has Board of Selectmen, still says Board of Selectmen, with three different policies. And then inexplicably, there's a Division 3 with the Planning Board that was adopted in 1991, and a Division 4 with Board of Health that was adopted in 1984. When you look at the three that we own under Division 2, alcoholic beverages actually was looked at by the Board of Selectmen and adopted for the first time in November of 2013. The other one in there is called hawkers and peddlers, and that actually was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in July of 2018 to replace the original version, which was first promulgated in 1992. But this one, 211, has been on the books since 1961, and I agree that at any point in time in the future, and could have been done in the past, this council could have looked at its responsibility to take care of signs and said, "We want to delegate that," but it did not do so, or change the official definition of those signs to say, "Signs for guidance purposes don't fall within that definitional terms, and therefore it can be done at a lower level." My point is that there is a regulation on the books. It is my responsibility as a member of Town Council to look at applicable regulations. We can recommend changes in the future, but as things stand right now, nobody but the Town Council has the authority to erect and maintain signs in this town.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Counselor McLean?
Just a couple of things. The, I do disagree with Counselor Smith-Galvin and Counselor Butt that this is going to be a big expenditure of our time, and it's all of these signs. I don't think we're ever going to have much argument about a handicap sign. I don't think we're ever going to have much argument about signs in school zones. I don't see this as being a huge burden on the council to do its job, and probably in most cases, do it very quickly. These signs are different. They're signs by the lake, they're signs under a specific policy of ours. And we're, we have many lawyers on this board, and our job is to read them. And it's also, and it was the Chair that brought the bike plan into this, and Counselor Dombrowski talking about how this is kind of curious. We have eight non-idling signs in one part of the town that is a very, very much going to be on our agenda in the future as well. And I have to say, I have probably covered more miles around this lake in my 33 years here than anybody in this room. And it is not 20% people idling. And I am also counting cars. And I'm on that road, usually running once a day, and also driving back up to Lowell Street to my friend's house. So I have a lot of car watching, and I have a lot of personal close to the cars walking and running. And it might be one in 15 or 20, and they may not be violating any law, and we don't even tell them what they're violating. This is why we have this disagreement, because we have these situations where a majority of this council, something happens through a request, and we don't know what's happening. It's not the first time. That's all I have to say.
Great, other comments? Mr. Mullen?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, I don't disagree at all.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, I don't disagree at all with Counselor McLean's take on the responsibility of the town council under the regulation with respect to signs. You read it right. And you've heard Steve understands that now as well. I've got to say, though, I was as mistaken as Steve was, because I was construing this under the charter, which says, "The town council shall act by the issuance of policy guidelines and directives. It is the intention of this provision that the town council shall act only through the adoption of policy directives and guidelines, which are to be implemented by the officers and employees appointed by or under its authority. The town administrator shall be the primary officer responsible for the implementation of policy directives and guidelines adopted by the town council. The daily administration of the affairs of the town shall be the exclusive responsibility of the town administrator." I would have thought that the posting of no idling signs was well subregulatory, not something that your council under the charter would have been vested with. So I was surprised, as I think Mr. Mayo was, to find that the regulation says what it does. And I agree with Counselor Vincent that some attention is due to these regulations. I was just looking through them now, and I was amazed to find that you are periodically entitled to close down streets for coasting, which I think means sledding.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I can't remember the last time you did that.
There's a lot of good stuff in there. There's also Schedule I.
Coming up at our January meeting, Mr. Mullen.
If you look at Schedule I, it tells you where you, where the no parking exists, and I'm going to tell you. I'm not going to repeat it right now, but there's a lot of misinformation in there, too. And I can't even find the west side of Main Street on that list in Schedule I. So yes, and it is a big job to fix a lot of this. And I'm not necessarily volunteering for a committee either, but I would think that, you know, the town, that we should all be looking at it, and the town administrator should be looking at it. We should come back here at some point and straighten some of this out, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of inconsistencies in our current policies. And those are our current policies. I'm sorry, I didn't write them. I wasn't here 40, 50 years ago, but they're there. And I do think there's a larger problem. I won't, I won't tell you all. I will never go to Steve and say, as a single town counselor, I want X. I wish none of us did, ever. I wish we would do things just openly and transparently right here. We can do it quickly if it's a simple thing. We may argue if it's a sign on the lake, but we won't argue about most things that just make common sense.
If I could just add one thing, I just want to again be clear, I don't want it to be construed that I ordered Steve to do anything. You know, this was an offhand comment where I said, could we look at putting signs by the lake around idling based on what I observed? Understand, you may observe something different. I'm just going on the experience of what I've observed, but I don't want this to be construed as something that was more formal or overreaching than just, hey, I'm seeing something as I go around the lake, seems to be an issue for me, can we look at doing something there? But Counselor Danny, you had your hand up.
Yes, what was I going to say? I was going to, I was going to say, whether we change the policy or not, I just think it really is for transparency purposes, whether, you know, Steve's the one who makes the decision or we make the decision, that it's, that it's the town council and the community is notified in some way of some kind of a listing that we get on our agenda, that, you know, recent signs that have gone up so that we know where they've gone up. And the sign inventory is a great idea of doing that and knowing where are these signs and when, you know, just so that everybody knows what's going on.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I don't agree with delegating the responsibility beyond us. I think it's within our authority. I think it's part of our job. I don't imagine that any signs that are reasonably requested of us should create, you know, consternation and two hours' worth of debate. I think these signs are, are an exception to that. If some, if there is a deaf child area in a neighborhood that TAC recommends to us, I don't imagine we're going to have much discussion on that. I think that's going to be a pretty straightforward vote. But I do not like the idea of kicking something to the town administrator just because it might be hard or time-consuming for the council. Well, that's why we're on it. And if you don't want to spend the time or take the responsibility, then you don't have to be in this position. There's someone else who would take it. So I think that whenever we're stripping this council of authority, that's concerning to me. As far as the policy piece that had come up earlier, you'd mentioned a policy committee, I might rephrase it almost as a, a task force of limited duration, where if we have some folks who are interested in at least making, doing a deep dive, compiling things, making sure we have everything that we could possibly, you know, need to be guided by, and then from there determining, okay, these are things that should be updated, this doesn't make a lot of sense, these are inconsistent. I think that's probably an important thing for us to do at some point, certainly, because I appreciate Counselor Vincent and Counselor McLean's work in looking and doing the deep dives on these things. And you're highlighting a lot of things that we need to look at and be aware of, that as a body we may not have been. And going forward, not just for us, but for future councils, I think it's important that we have, you know, a depository of, this is where it all is, and so the public can also see, this is where it all is, this is what guides us, this is our jurisdiction, this is our authority, this is outside of our authority. And I think that's really important. And it sounds like there's probably a lot of updating that needs to happen, too. And that's a part of what I think we should be also focused on.
Yes, Counselor Danny?
Just for the record, I do agree that it should be a town council decision. I'm saying that if there is, if there does get to the point where the, a majority of this board wants to take, change the policy and give the authority to the town administrator, that I would say that it still needs to come to this board in some way, just notifying us of what has been done. But I do think it's our responsibility. I don't think it would be, I don't think that there's going to be many times that it's going to be a big debate.
So I think we're getting a little far afield from the motion on the table in terms of the note of idling, removing the no idling signs on Main Street. Is there any more discussion on that question? Seeing none, the motion's been made in second, and just to make sure I understand, the motion is to remove the eight signs that were put up along Main Street?
Yes, by the way, immediately pending further action by the town council, as the full town council.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? And one abstention myself. So motion carries by a vote of 5-1-1. Again, I will put the request out there, given that we have had the discussion on policies. We will not look at our policies unless members of this council volunteer to, to put in the time and effort. So would ask people to please get in touch with me and/or Mr. Mayo so that we can bring back sort of this creation of either a task force or committee at future meetings. All right. Item number seven, bond anticipation notes. Mr. Mayo, I hope you've gotten a glass of water and are ready to do some reading.
Yes, I'm ready. Unless, unless Counselor McLean wants it.
No. I'm content.
So anyways, in your packet, there are two sets of bond anticipation notes or bands for you tonight, one of which is the financing for the Butler Rav project, which will be back in front of this council in December, hopefully to have a disposition of that property in the, at the Maytown meeting. That is for $1,991,000, and that has a net interest cost of 5.95%. Still better than the market, but a little bit higher than we used to, because this is a taxable project, because it's, because it's kind of where the town can make some money on, it's not like a school or a public building. So the finance company or the banks that lend on it, they will actually pay taxes on that, so they have to get a little higher interest rate. Still better than you can get on your mortgage. That will go through December of 2024. Hopefully, that'll be gone, and if it isn't, we can roll it over. The other one, which is a much better rate because it is not taxable, is rolling in the bond anticipation note for the feasibility study for the high school project, and that's $1,156,000, and that will expire or be due on 2/23/24. The reason for that is in February, we'll be coming forward with a larger part of the high school borrowing, because we'll actually be starting to spend the money. You know, right now, we're not, you know, doing plans and things like that, so not spending money on construction. That rate is a little bit better. It's a net interest cost of 4.35%. And you may remember when we did vote on this at the November town meeting in 2020, I believe, I believe it was that long ago, the range that we presented to the public was four and a quarter to five and a half percent. So it's still within there. I am still looking into my crystal ball. I still feel that there is some downward pressure on long-term notes, so I think we'll do a little bit better. I think we're still in a little bit of an inverted yield curve scenario, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. And again, all these were authorized by town meeting, and in the case of the high school, a referendum vote because of the two and a half debt exclusion. So I will read the vote of the town council of both of these unless there's any questions. No? And some of you have signed it. I'll pass this around. So, "We hereby determine, in accordance with General Law Chapter 70B, that the cost of the Memorial High School feasibility study authorized by a vote of the town passed on November 7, 2020, Article III, being refinanced with proceeds of a portion of the notes defined below, together with all of the bonds and notes of the town previous issued to pay costs of this project, does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant, and we do hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law's Chapter 70B. Further voted to approve the sale of $1,991,006.25% general obligation bond anticipation note Series A, subject to Massachusetts and federal income taxation, the Series A note of the town dated September 21, 2023, and payable September 20, 2024, to Piper Sandler &amp; Company at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $5,933.18. Further voted to approve the sale of $1,156,004.5% general obligation bond anticipation note Series B, the Series B note and together with the Series A note, the notes of the town dated September 21, 2023, and payable February 23, 2024, to Piper Sandler &amp; Company at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $705.16. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 30, 2023, and final official statement dated September 7, 2023, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, proven, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the town council be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant offense disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any documents, any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail, in PDF file, or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of manually executed counterpart signature page to each document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the town council, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Do I have a motion to that effect? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as read by Mr. Mayo? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, debt service. We will take a motion to transfer $1 million from the general fund to the debt service capital needs account. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayo, any context?
Yeah, this is, this is an annual, this is an annual event. It really is an accounting entry, as the, as the council and the town knows, is that we do have a debt service fund where we've paid for, you know, multiple elementary schools. We paid for the Galvin School, we paid it for a lot of other projects, we run the high school project through it. And when this was set up many years ago, the first $1 million comes directly off the top without going through a town meeting vote, so to speak. However, the town council still needs to move that from the general fund to the debt service fund. So this is an annual motion that does that.
Further questions? No, the motion on the table is to transfer $1 million from the general fund to the debt service capital needs account. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number nine, town meeting. Do we have a motion related to the regular town meeting?
I move, I move that we set a proposed date, time, and location for the regular town meeting for Saturday, November 18, 2023, at 8:00 a.m. in the Galvin Middle School auditorium and to open the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So just as a frame of reference, we'd be going back to Saturday morning for the fall town meeting. We've been kind of switching back and forth between Saturdays and Mondays. Motion on the table is to set the date of town meeting and open the warrant. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Is there a motion related to the warrant closing?
I move that we set proposed date to close the warrant on Friday, October 13, 2023, at 12:00 p.m.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 10, we covered item 10B. Item 10A is to set a public hearing for an alcohol liquor license for WXSSLLC, DBA Way Asian Kitchen, for October 2, 2023, at 7:03 p.m. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 11, donations. Do we have a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $32,025 for the BB Library?
Still moved with thanks.
Seconded.
Thank you. And I just want to note, a large chunk of this, about $29,000, is from the Blossoms at the BB event. So thank you for everyone who attended that and contributed to that. Always a great event, and I was glad to be, glad to have it back this year. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And we'll take a motion to accept a gift of $1,000 to the youth action team with thanks.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 12 is a one-day liquor license. Do we have a motion for number 12?
Move for a one-day liquor license for a tapped beer truck for a private event on September 14, 2023, at Winsup by Wakefield, at 123 Foundry Street.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, seeing none. Ms. Dalton, I again assume this has gone through the whole process and approvals on our end?
Yes, that is correct.
Great. Oh, sorry, Counselor Dombrowski.
Can I just confirm, Mr. Mullen, the, what distinguishes this from, say, like, just somebody having a house party? Is it because it's, it's a commercial property, because it's an office party? So I'm just trying to understand, you know, why they would need to apply for that if they're doing it on their own premises?
Yeah, because of the commercial nature of it.
That's, that's the distinction.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Motion is to approve the liquor license for a one-day event for the tapped beer truck. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item number 13 is appointments. I don't believe we need a vote for this, but this is more just communication that, to open the application period for the Economic Development Committee. So this was something we had created, I feel like this was maybe like pre-pandemic, actually, thinking Counselor Smith Galvin and Counselor- and Council Drabaski when we worked on this. It's been a long time.
It was just after that. It was pandemic time, but yeah.
So the intent is to put out a call for applications, with applications due by October 20th, Sherry, I believe?
Yes, that is correct.
And then with the idea that we would do appointments at our November 13th meeting. Any questions? All right. Well, we'll consider that, we'll get that out there this week. Item number 14, Council Vincent, warrants.
Warrant 55 and 56 close out the last fiscal year. 55 is $1,021,315.64. Most of that is school and public works. Warrant 56 is $23,837.50. That's school expenses. And we've got warrant number three, that's $528,629. That's general insurance. Warrant four, $2,813,932.61. 1.45 million of that is town council and a lot of that is school-related, including 1.158 million to Sims and McKee, and then $133,000 to Left Field. And warrant number five is $7,876,252, and that's all for the retirement fund. And then warrant number six, $2,661,261.65. Some of that is school-related as well, $130,000 to Sprague, and then $322,000 of that is for the bond building. And that's it for the warrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any questions? No, all right. Moving on, item number 15, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the August 14th, 2023 town council executive session meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Do we have a motion to approve the August 14th, 2023 town council meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. With thanks to our intrepid clerk for continuing to do an excellent job pulling those together. Item number 16, announcements.
I just had one.
Mr. Mayo?
You will see on the front lawn of town hall within the next week or so, sign that talks about Wakefield, well, the number sign, one that's going to talk about Wakefield's story. And it's going to say, we remember the 120 lives lost since substance misuse since 2010, studying, working, and raising families. You'll also see a lot of blue ribbons. This is through Wake Up, really giving awareness to all the good work that they do. There'll be one sign also about lives lost to suicide, because it is suicide away this month. And one sign about recovery and collaboration in Wakefield. And that'll have a QR code for local mental health and substance use resources. I saw a very similar display in Lynnfield, and it is quite moving. So just wanted to make the council aware of that, and that's through Wake Up. I know that we're all familiar with Wake Up, and they do a lot of wonderful work in town. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Other announcements? Council McLean?
Just a few. The ALS walk was a big success from what I could see on Sunday. My wife and I participated. I know the chair spoke. You did speak, yes?
I did.
Yes, you did. And just reminders, the Wave Race is October 14th, '23. Jerry's Run for All Ages is November 4th, 2023. I'm already signed up. You can find them on the websites. Also, Town Administrator Mayo and I attended yet another 40B application on Stark Ave, just off of Khan Street, which already has two others on September 8th. So that'll be becoming before the council as well soon. And on top of that, I would just say that as I run on North Ave and I see a smashed white fence, I hope that people will be careful out there and slow down a little bit. That was not a speed situation from what I've read, but that could have been a lot worse because that car obviously crossed over where bicyclists, runners, walkers with baby carriages often traverse. So please, people, you know, all of our joining towns have gone to 25 miles per hour. It seems to me we don't necessarily have the field to do that in Wakefield, but for heaven's sakes, there's no reason to do 40, 45 in a 30 mile an hour zone. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Just for reference for the council and the public, the 40B proposed for Stark Ave will be in front of us at our next meeting, which is October 2nd at this point, unless something happens between now and then. But we'll have the developers there at that meeting. Other announcements? Council Danny?
I'm sure the draft of the master plan is going to be coming to the community for a two-week comment period. It's going to be from September 14th to September 29th. And that, there's going to be an online public comment period also. Aaron Kokinda, a director of economic and community development, is going to be at the farmer's market to answer any questions about the master plan and talking about being able to provide feedback. So it's everybody's opportunity. I assume that that will be online, so people will be able to get, be able to read it and provide any kind of comments. And it's also going to be, it's a very long document, but it's going to be divided into different areas. So if there's one area that you really want to focus in on, you'll be able to find that information easily. So as much community feedback as we can have is, is the better the final document will be. So I hope everybody can give us your feedback.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I've been kind of vocal over the last few years about my experiences on 9/11, having gotten stationed at the Pentagon in July of 2001. And just my staff and I, some of our staff and I, were at a temporary building just outside of the Pentagon where the remaining staff was in the Pentagon. For a lot of years, I tried to ignore the effects that 9/11 had on me, especially going back, being evacuated that day, going back into the Pentagon two days later. To this day, the smell of jet fuel affects me. But I've learned to embrace this. So I thought what I would bring in today is this picture of my experiences at the Pentagon. This shows my name and rank and the dates of July 2001 to September 2003. This is a picture of the Pentagon before it was hit. All of these are shipmates of mine who signed this when I left that command. I didn't lose any of these shipmates that day, but I spent many hours on the phone with their loved ones, waiting to hear, before the days of cell phones, waiting to hear whether they got out of the Pentagon and, and made it home safely. So thank you for just letting me share that.
Thank you very much. Other announcements? Council Drabaski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to just reiterate what Council McLean was saying about the Wave Race, wavenline.org. You can sign up for it, Saturday, it's October 14th. Each year, that race has grown bigger. Last year was the largest turnout, and hopefully this year will be even larger. It's a great race. It's a great time of year to be doing it. You can maybe even race some town councils, potentially. And then on a more, a more poignant note for, for today, I just wanted to recognize the fact that I know that September 11th has important meaning to so many people and in very different ways. And one way that really struck me is actually, Council Vincent, first, thank you for your service, but also what you just pointed out. I do a lot of work with, with Homebase. That's an amazing organization that deals with the invisible wounds of war. And so this tie is actually a gift that they, they had given me for running a marathon on their behalf. And it just reminds me that this day, we think of the 3,000 lives lost and their families and the impact. And we also need to remember all of the, the service members from that day forward who have, you know, fought for our country in, in service of freedom and continue to, to deal with, with the effects in many, many different ways. It's a significant issue in our community, and it's a significant issue in our, in our commonwealth. And I would just encourage everyone to be mindful of that. And days like today have, again, a lot of different meanings for a lot of different folks, and this day in particular. And, you know, we just remember those that we lost, and we're incredibly thankful for those, the first responders that day, but also all of those that fought for our freedoms in, in the years that followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? Council Smith Galvin?
This Saturday is the open streets around Lake Wana Pallett. So streets will be open to walkers, walkers, strollers, and close to some vehicular traffic. So that is, no, Saturday, I guess it is, Saturday, 16th, from 1 to 5. So if people are interested in coming down and doing that. And then I just had something perhaps for the chair in the, I know we're going to have the Environmental Sustainability Committee coming in front of us in the next probably couple of weeks. And it just seems to me that so many things that we're talking about these days are kind of climate-related. And I'm wondering whether it's, it's something that maybe this council takes on leadership on and asks for, you know, the various committees that we have working on things to maybe put together, something like our welcoming statement, but something that has maybe a climate or a climate plan or some climate goals, so that we can at least be evaluating things through a climate lens. I mean, I think if we had evaluated things like the VOKE or, you know, even certain signage or anything that we really do in town through a climate lens, then we might at least ask ourselves the questions and look at things a little differently.
Certainly, we can add that to, to one of our upcoming agendas and perhaps in conjunction with that, that discussion. Great. Thank you. Council Buck?
Just, just to carry on in some of the events coming up, just wishing everyone a happy Rosh Hashanah on Friday, who celebrates. Sweetser Lectures have all been planned for the fall. Events are back in full force. As mentioned, the Wave Race on October 14th, our second annual town day, October 7th. And then just to, just to recognize our public safety and fire for the fire that we had in our town and the great job, Steve, that your entire team and departments did, I just wanted to take a moment that was, you know, disturbing news to wake up to in the morning, and your team handled it very well. So please pass on our thanks to Deputy Chief-in-Chief and everyone else that was involved.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, Ms. Dalton, any announcements on your end?
Nothing, thanks.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. I just want to add a couple of quick things. One is a reminder that the town council will be holding town council office hours at the Wakefield Farmer's Market. That's not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, September 23rd, from 9 to 1. So please come by and say hello. Those are always a lot of fun. Secondly, I did want to highlight, just to make sure folks are aware, there are a number of different service interruptions and track work on the commuter rail that are impacting our community. We do have some detail as we find it on our website. Unfortunately, I think one of our frustrations is we don't always get timely updates from the MBTA, but we'll continue to put out that information as we get it, and, and certainly we'll pass that along. And then finally, just from a transportation standpoint, so I, I was driving down Main Street the other day, and I was noticed, it was almost like luxurious to drive down there, as a section of Main Street is now newly paved and nice and smooth. So I wanted to use that just to highlight the fact that there is a lot of construction going on in town, some real progress being made, and would encourage people to go to the website and check out the project dashboard that we have in place. Great place to get really real-time updates on what's happening in town, what's slated over the next couple of weeks, so that we can all plan ahead and, again, hopefully see some, some results there. So that is announcements for today. We'll move on to item number 17, matters not anticipated. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 18, adjournment. Our next town council meeting will be Monday, October 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. There is a possibility we may have an executive session before then, just to make the council aware, but when the agenda's posted, we will obviously make sure folks are aware of that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you very much, everyone, for today's discussion. Thank you, Wakefield, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.